Good morning, everybody. If we could call the meeting to order and everybody could stand for the salute to the flag, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
(inaudible)
Are there going to be any agenda changes for today?
No.
Okay. We will now go to public comment for anybody that has any comment that is not on the agenda. Good morning.
Good morning, Vicki Mills. And before I say anything, my husband is not responsible for anything I say or do. Okay? I have some pictures, and I know the Chair has seen this, but I would like to have all of you see it before I start talking about it.
Do you want us just to pass them down?
Here, we can pass them down. We're good.
What you have in front of you is a picture that was taken on 7/7 of this year of Sarah Hodson's property. I had heard about her terracing, but I am a visual learner, so until I saw the picture, I didn't realize how much area was destroyed irresponsibly. I grew up in a farm in northwest Iowa. I grew up where you take care of the land, the land will take care of you. This is not taking care of the land. This is somebody that needs to be watched. She may have learned her lesson, she may not have. I don't know. I don't know her personally. But anybody that could do this to the land that they are going to be using for income needs to be watched to be sure that she has made her lesson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Jenny Fuqua, and I'm the recently hired outreach coordinator for the Community Action Project, or CAP. For over 10 years, CAP has worked with the county to complete legally valid plans, projects, and EIRs. Our comments were echoed by the California Supreme Court in April of 2017 in the Banning Ranch Conservancy case. On July 4th, CAP facilitator Tom Infusino sent you a letter explaining the case in some detail. We've also come up with a helpful acronym, ARISE, A-R-I-S-E, to help members of the Planning Commission remember the guidance from the Banning Ranch Conservancy case. A: Analyze alternatives. In Banning Ranch, the court told local governments to meaningfully address feasible alternatives to the proposed project. The California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, requires meaningful analysis, evaluation, and comparison of alternatives to the proposed project. Alternatives are designed to avoid or substantially lessen negative impacts. On the one hand, the county has taken a positive step to evaluate both a regulation and a ban option in the commercial cannabis draft environmental impact report, as this will inform both the public debate and the county's decision. However, it was a disastrous and indefensible step for past boards to refuse to let the public even look at the Mitner General Plan alternative, let alone consider it in the General Plan DEIR. And we urge you to reconsider this decision before it's too late for you to rectify it. R: Respond to comments. The court said that when residents and commenting agencies raised a concern early and often, the lead agency owed them a reasoned response. For example, with regard to the cannabis cultivation DEIR, both the public and public officials have raised valid concerns about the funding implementation of the ordinance to mitigate impacts. A county would be wise not to continue to disregard reasonable environmental concerns repeatedly raised in comments on an EIR by sister agencies and concerned citizens. If a supervisor or commissioner is aware of defective responses to comments, it is their legal obligation not to support certification of the EIR until those comments are addressed. I: Integrate SEQA and land use approval processes. In Banning Ranch, the court told local governments to integrate land use planning and environmental review procedures as clearly set out in SEQA guidelines. For example, back in 2013, CAP urged the county to integrate into the general plan update countywide programs for the mitigation of impacts. Such an effort would improve business climate, improve the local environment, and promote peace in local communities. S: State impacts without omissions or deferrals. In Banning Ranch, it was determined that the omission of information regarding an impact is unacceptable and ultimately a prejudicial abuse of discretion. The CPC advised the county back in February that the general plan update EIR should provide sufficient analysis to allow decision makers to make a sound judgment. Additionally, it must reflect a good faith effort at full disclosure. Any omissions that result in inadequate evaluation of project impacts and mitigation measures cannot be deemed harmless. The fact that another agency with jurisdiction over the impact will later decide the issue does not excuse a local lead agency from considering the issue in the EIR, but rather emphasizes the need to consider the issue. E: Explain controversies. In Banning Ranch, the court recognized that a disagreement among agency experts over an environmental impact may not be resolved during the environmental review process. In these instances, it is the lead agency's obligation to disclose these disagreements in the EIR. As the CPC noted in scoping comments on the general plan update DEIR back in February, these requirements are directly connected to the standard that the EIR reflect a good faith effort at full disclosure. An EIR that fails to make such a disclosure must not be certified as complying with SEQA. So, we have ARISE. The county is currently working on EIRs to inform the Planning Commission, the Board of Supervisors, and the public about two major decisions: the general plan update and the ban or regulation of commercial cannabis.
Jenny, you have about 30 seconds.
Okay. These decisions will dramatically affect the quality of life for the citizens of Calaveras County, as well as the vitality of local communities, the productivity of the county's resource lands, and the integrity of the county's natural environment. It would be in the county's best interest for the Planning Commission to adhere to the unequivocal guidance and unanimous decision of the California Supreme Court in the Banning Ranch Conservancy case. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up on some of the comments that Vicki had. I was at the meeting for the Hodson review of the denial. I was absolutely dumbfounded, the way it turned out. I've never seen anything like that before. As a former contractor, now retired, if I had put something in place like that bottom shelf on that terrace and had people, or the public, or anyone able to get out there, OSHA would have been all over me. I would have been out of business and very likely facing a very stiff fine. How that got by you, I don't know. But that's one of the most dangerous situations I've ever seen. In trying to find out the environmental impact of some of these operations on our fragile environment, I also noticed that the outhouse was pulled out and taken off someplace, but that was an open pit into the ground for human waste. And I don't remember anyone saying, maybe environmental health should go out there and take samples and see how far it's spread, or what else might be out there. At almost every single point in that application, there were violations that should immediately have disqualified that application from moving forward. It was horrendous. And like I say, I was absolutely dumbfounded when that was allowed to go on without at least taking it to the Board of Supervisors, with maybe a few more department heads involved that could do some investigating and find out what was going on at that site. I think that's a site that's going to come back to haunt this county, and I'm really sorry that it's moving forward, but like I say, it was shocking. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further comment? Okay. We will move on to consent agenda items. An approval of the minutes for June 22nd. Does anybody have any changes they would like to address on the minutes?
No.
Okay. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes for June 22nd?
So moved. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries by vote. Okay. We're going to move into our public hearings now, and we will go to Appeal 2016-654. And Paul?
Yes, me and. We're ready to roll. Paul Groh with Planning Department. This is Appeal Number 2016-654. Norman Gunsel and Amy Volk Gunsel, appealing the denial of a commercial cannabis registration by the planning director. Project description. This is an appeal of a denial of a commercial cannabis registration by the planning director, and the registration was denied for the following two reasons. First, the applicant did not produce evidence that no later than May 10th, 2016, cultivation, grading, or earthmoving commensurate with the area purported to be developed had occurred on the site. The second reason was the application for registration contained false or misleading This is the site location. It is 9.34 acres on the west side of Adobe Gulch Road, approximately one half mile north of the intersection Cape City Road and Adobe Gulch Road. It's in Mountain Ranch Township, four North Range 13 East. It's Section 9. And, whoops, Mountain Ranch, coming down Mountain Ranch Road, out Michael Road, onto Cape City Road, and a half mile up, we find our site right there. On June 29, 2016, the applicant's Norman Gunsel and Amy Volk Gunsel filed for a commercial cannabis registration cultivation for 22,000 square feet of outdoor cultivation area, and they were granted a registration pending application in that amount. The site is actually, this one right here, it is 654. The Gunsels actually own four contiguous parcels out there. They actually have applications for commercial cannabis on all four. This is county aerial, you can see, taken June 9, 2016. It shows the relationship between the four parcels. And I'd like to just walk you around this parcel. You start down here at the corner. You basically follow the drive up to where you see the edge of this row of trees, over to a point where there is a road coming in there, and then you head south towards basically a notch in the woods right here, and then parallel with this access drive, that is your parcel right there. The first reason for denial was the applicant failed to meet the requirements of Section And that requires that all registrants provide a date stamped photographic evidence of either earthmoving, grading, or cultivation prior to May 10th, 2016, which is commensurate with the area applied for in their application. With this application came this plot plan you're looking at right there. And you can see Adobe Gulch Road. This is our parcel. There's a six-foot fence going around the whole thing. There's a 75-foot margin noted. That's your 75-foot setback going all the way around the parcel and sitting right in the middle of the parcel. Schematically on that site plan is our 22,000 square feet of grow area. Now, the appellant on this project presented four photographic, four photographs as far as evidence goes. This is the first of the four. This photograph, obviously taken March 26, 2016, has the following characteristics. You can see there's a large bare earth area right here where it appears cultivation is underway. There's a drip system laid out in here. We have some white bags on the ground right here. The bare earth is surrounded by a green grass border, and beyond it, we see the trees. We're far enough away and in the middle of this cultivation area that you can actually see the tops of the trees. The next photo, April 2nd, 2016. Again, we see a lot of bare earth in this photograph. There are these rows that are being cultivated, and the earth is obviously been turned over. It's bare. In between these rows, alternating between them are these nice green grass strips. We also have the, what appears to be a frost cover of some sort, frost protection, this clear or white plastic. Third photograph. Again, we see some bare earth here. There's some scattered grass shown. We have cannabis growing here. I don't know how tall those plants are, maybe a foot, two feet, 18 inches, I'm not sure, but plenty of bare earth that ought to be visible when we get to our aerial photographs. It's a nice sunny location. You can see the sun shine in on those plants. And the trees that are in the background, you can see the tops of them, or well out of the trees and out into a nice sunny location. So, we took these three photographs, we went back to the aerials, and we started looking for those characteristics on the aerials. This is a terracotta aerial taken on March 17, 2016. It's nine days before the first of those three photographs we just reviewed. And just to walk you around the site again, up the driveway, across the rows of trees, back down to this corner, and that's it, right there. So somewhere within this area right here, we ought to be seeing some nice big bare earth areas where cultivation's occurring, maybe those strips where we see the alternating brown bare earth, the green stripes in between it, that sort of thing, or maybe some of those plastic frost protection covers. A good close look at that, pretty obvious to me, there's no activity like that occurring on that site, it's just covered in a nice layer of green grass. The next photograph aerial, excuse me, is taken May 31st. This is a Google aerial. And this is actually 30 days after the last of those three photographs we just reviewed. And again, to walk you around the site, up the drive, across the rows of trees, over to this corner, down here, and then back. So somewhere in here, and hopefully, right in the middle of that, the location shown on the plot plan, we should be seeing some of those characteristics of cultivation that we saw in the evidence photographs. But again, we're not seeing the big open brown bare earth cultivation areas, the stripes that we see, the alternate, the alternating stripes of brown and green in the other photograph, or the clear white plastic, nothing of that nature at all. So that was three out of the four evidence photographs. The final evidence photograph was this. And in this photograph, you can see, this is basically, I believe it's a single plant, although I took a closer look at it, and there may be a second plant behind it. I'm not exactly sure. But you can see, this is out in a nice sunny location, the trees are in the background. It appears, well, it is what it is. And I'll get back to that in just a second here. So, that one was actually taken, let me go back here, that was August 21st of 2015. So, August 1st of 2015, this isn't the best aerial, but this is just a few weeks prior. And again, our parcel is right here, and there is no apparent established cultivation site within that aerial right there.
Paul, if I could interrupt.
Yes, sir.
In your staff report, while you have that picture, but it's dated August 1st, 2016, just to avoid any confusion, 2015 is what you meant because that's what your text says.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes, yes. I'm sorry. Yeah. No, that would have been 2015, I'm sure.
Did you read?
That must have been in there. I don't know why, I wouldn't be making the comparison.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you, Tim. It's actually not even really relevant to the argument, which you'll see right here to some extent. Because what this all boils down to is that the three photographs, and this is representative of the first three that we looked at, is pretty obvious from the characteristics of those photographs. We saw nothing that looked like that on those, on the aerial images that we compared them to, taken on or about the same time. So it's pretty obvious that those three photographs were not taken on the site, and they're not valid as evidence. The final photograph here of the single plant is really not valid because it is in no way commensurate with the development of 20,000 square feet of commercial cannabis. So, taken altogether, the appellant failed to provide adequate evidence to support their application for 22,000 square feet of cultivation. The second cause for the denial was false and misleading information. And under Section 1795-170A4, the planning director is allowed to invalidate any registration that was submitted with false or misleading information. Again, back to the evidence photographs, this is just typical of the three, the first three that we reviewed. It's pretty obvious that these activities are not occurring on the parcel in 2016. That's very apparent when you look at aerial photography taken prior and after the evidence photos. Therefore, those photos are false. The activity that's depicted in the photographs is cultivation activities, which were required to occur prior to May 10th to meet the evidence requirement. So, staff looking at that photograph, that photograph would lead us to assume that these activities are truly created, were occurring on the site, and that was misleading. So, the appellant was denied on the basis that they had provided both false and misleading information. I think that's about it. I do see Mr. Watts, Thomas Watts from Code, he is in the audience here. I don't know if you had anything you would like to add to this one? You good with that? Okay. Very good. I think that's our presentation.
So, I failed to state that in the procedures, each presenter will get 15 minutes, will go to public comment, and then come back for rebuttal, and I just wanted to remind everybody of that. So you want to come on up now, please?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Charnell James, and I represent the property owners on this application. All of that would be great information if these were actually the photos submitted on this application. Those were the photos submitted on the application for parcel 51. And that is the crux of the entire problem with these three applications and the three appeals that you're going to hear today, is that there is a mix-up from the county's position of the pictures that were submitted on each of those different properties. And this is consistent not only just with the processing of the application, but you'll see in the next two ones, when they talk about code enforcement violations, there's mix-up of notes of what really happened at different, within hoop houses, and then they have to correct themselves, and this, these three applications that were submitted, there's actually four submitted total, one was approved. These other three, it's just too much information for the county to process, and they mix things up. These were not the photos submitted with this application. The photos that were submitted with this application fall in line with what's there. And you can see in the overhead shot that there is already starting places. You don't have to grade, it's a level process. And even the historic photos, you can see where there's cultivation around the trees, which would have been consistent with someone who's trying to do an illegal grow, which is what had been happening on this property for years prior. So all of cultivation would have been done within shadows of the trees in order to protect from flyovers. So, that's the beginning part, is that they're, the stuff that they're presenting to you is not accurate. The second thing is my-
Excuse me, do you have the photographs you claim were submitted with this application?
I believe you guys have them in your presentation, correct?
On that particular parcel?
Mm-hmm, for that application.
Do we have photos with us on that particular parcel?
Do you have those in your presentation? My client has asked to do a presentation. The presentation is going to actually cover all three of the parcels because they have the presentation for that, so I'm reserving time for them to do that. It won't take them the full 10 minutes to do that. We don't have a complete copy of the application because they gave the whole application to them. It's something very simple for the county to pull all three of those applications and be able to show you, all three of them. As it's their burden to prove that, that's their, they're the ones that are processing the application, we would ask that that be something that-
The burden is on the applicant, but I'm going to, I'm going to stop you for just one second because I want to defer to legal counsel. We're specifically hearing on this appeal, and they're going to do a presentation on all three. How does that get handled?
I think, I mean, I think it would be up to the Chair, if the Chair wants to, maybe just when we open the next two hearings, just say, you know, maybe on the record incorporate by reference, the presentation given in the first, in Appeal Number blah, 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 would be incorporated as part of their testimony for-
Okay.
If I might interject, it seems to me that if you're saying that there's massive confusion amongst these three applications, we should consider each application individually so we can sort things out as to what the facts are as to each application.
I think we'd have to look at all three of them together. I mean, I hate, I'm respectfully disagreeing with you.
You have to convince us.
But the way that these were submitted, with all of them together, the problem is is that it's been processed and the pictures have been moved between the things-
And you didn't keep up.
-as well as other applications. No, because the staff, when the staff report that I read online before the last hearing, when we were going through stuff, these photos were actually in the other staff report. They fixed the staff report. So I have, the staff report is different than what came out before, so.
I left my prior one at home, but I doubt that.
Well, that's what I remember from what I've reviewed them, and then when I-
Do you have the prior one with you?
I do.
Paul, this says, "Staff report modifications" on the front page. Were these modified from our two-week ago package when we did the continuance?
It's basically the same staff report. The only thing that was changed, I think there's a note right on the front of it, it says that the changes had to do with adding their whereas and changing the dates.
But the figures of the pictures themselves have not been changed?
No, 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 all of that stuff is inside the-
See, I have those figures attached with the, with the other staff report.
You do have those figures attached, correct?
No, with, they were attached with the other staff report.
They have not changed the pictures on the staff report since last time and this time, have they?
What I'm showing in my book is that they were with different ones. So let me pull out what I have. Well, instead of wasting my time while I'm pulling this, can I have my client do the presentation, and then I'll pull out the stuff and do that?
That would be great, thank you.
Because we only have 15 minutes, so. We need to be able to connect for a slideshow. Can we get some help so we can present to the screen as well?
Did they bring their own computer?
They did, yes.
It just, for future, it would be much more helpful if you could let us know in advance that your clients want to do a slideshow so we can be more prepared at the time of the hearing.
That would be fine. I appreciate that, and we'll make sure we do that in the future. We'll get as much as you can done in the 15 minutes, and then we have your laptops so we can get it done.
Yeah, I'm thinking the same thing. And then we can-
We're talking about-
Okay. Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break to let them get organized real quick because we're going to be letting him present on the record for all three appeals during this presentation. That's going to limit time in the next two appeals because it's already going to be done, so we'll take a 10-minute break so you can get set up. So we'll, we'll take a ten-minute break so you can get set up. Thank you. Their seats?
No, we weren't able to get it to work. We're going to send him off to print it. During that, thank you for the break for us to go through and try to get this situated one way or the other. We don't have the cables to connect to the presentation system. I have sent his son out to go and print the slides. We'll just present them at the next item. They have more to do with the next two parcels than this one. And as far as what you're asking, as far as my attachments, none of my attachments are attached, so I can't provide you the proof that you're asking for. I can provide my client's testimony that those photos were submitted as part of the application for parcel fifty-one. And they were not submitted as this parcel. On this parcel, they submitted a single, sorry, they submitted a single photo that had to do with a plant grown on the property. And then historic comments about that they had grown in the trees because this was, like I said, this was grown previously as an illegal grow.
I'm sorry, Mrs. James, can I interrupt you for one moment?
Sure.
How do you know that those photos weren't submitted with this application if he doesn't have a copy of it to show us? How do we know that?
We have his testimony. And there is nothing to say that his, that he's lying in his testimony. That's a decision whether you need to believe him in his testimony or not. His testimony is that he had submitted those photos as part of the application for fifty-one, not for this parcel.
Did you come across the last, last meeting's staff report?
All of my attachments are detached, so I don't have anything stapled together. So there's no way that I can show you.
I can assure you from my memory, they're the same photographs.
My memory is that they're different, but we will just agree to disagree.
It's easy to verify on the website. I mean, because all those staff reports are still on the website.
That would be fine. In the meantime, I'd like to have my, my client present, give his presentation as far as where it pertains to this property, what he recalls for his application being submitted on this property and the historic use of this property. So if you'll give me time, go ahead.
Sure. I'm going to-
Thanks.
I'm going to interrupt for one second. Paul, while we are listening to his presentation, can you pull up the planning department's website and pull that agenda from a couple of weeks ago? And that way we can see the photos that were on the agenda then. And while we're listening to the presentation, maybe you could search for that for us?
Actually, unfortunately, that's not possible because of the attack that the county's website had a couple of weeks ago.
That's right.
So the website is down. We're rebuilding it. All we can do is, is, I suppose we go back and see if we can pull a copy of the original one from archives.
I can have the staff report on here from that date.
Great.
I think I have it in my car as well. So, okay, we'll continue. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for allowing me to come here and speak today. My presentation is a general presentation of our, of our operation, a little bit of history of my family and our farm. I, I would just like to say in all due respect, these photos, I did not submit them for parcel seventeen. These are all pictures of parcel fifty-one and that can easily be proven. Parcel seventeen was my backup illegal grow. Everything was under trees. We found one photo of one plant. And I, as far as I can recall, that was the only one that I submitted for that parcel.
Was that the one we did see of the one plant?
No, I didn't see it on there. I didn't see, all those were parcel fifty-one. I'm, I'm not ruling out that I made, might have made a mistake, but I don't really think so. We were pretty thorough in, in what we arranged for each of the four applications. As far as cultivation goes, I have a long history of cultivating that land for vegetable garden. It's all certified through CCOF. The county has been inspecting me for the better part of twenty years as a vegetable garden on that site. Part of my organic system plan, I'm a member of CCOF, is that we use crop rotation. It's very important that we rotate our crops. So I have three different gardens that we rotate, leaving some gardens fallow for a year, two, three years. As we rotate, this is part of our organic system plan. We are inspected annually by the USDA to make sure that we are actually doing this. And I was really looking forward to being able to use that parcel. It's good, healthy soil. It's all certified organic. It's all annually inspected, whether I plant or grow anything on it or not. And I'm, I just want the board to know that I never tried to do anything illegal or secretive about this. I've always come right out front with all this. When I, when I examined the, the application for, for growing commercially, I examined it and I said, it's like you guys wrote this thing for me. I don't have to stretch anything. I don't have to make anything up or pull any rabbits out of a hat. I can just be myself and show you what I've done and I should just be able to walk right into this. I've been farming this land for fifty-one years. I'm really proud of what we've done. We've supported and been to all the local farmers' markets and we are just trying to figure out how to make it economically as a small family farm. And I saw this as being a great opportunity for my family to do something that was going to benefit people. And I can now come out of the woods and be a real legitimate commercial grower and I want to just do everything right. And if there's anything that I can do to correct a situation or to clarify any, any discrepancy that may be appearing, I'd be more than happy to do that. Like I said, I have a, a long presentation that goes with the slideshow, but obviously this has kind of taken me by surprise. Like I said, my presentation is more general, how our farm operates and our philosophy of farming. And now I find myself defending a, a situation here that I was not prepared for. It's really surprising me. It's making me look like I'm trying to do something behind your back and that's the last thing I want.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
This item came on for hearing, what, three? Couple of meetings ago. I've forgotten exactly.
It's been three months, I believe.
It's been-
It was graduation night.
It was graduation night.
So anyhow, I'm pretty sure when we look at what was presented before, ready to be presented the last meeting, which you all were given great notice of, I'm pretty sure you're going to find these same photographs were there.
For parcel seventeen?
Yes. When, when this was coming on for hearing before-
I don't know if he looked at the staff report previously.
Excuse me?
I don't know that he looked at the staff report.
Well, he has an attorney representing him that knew what pictures were there.
I was not the, I was not the attorney that filed that application.
No, you were here for the hearing to get the extension of time. I assume you had looked at the materials.
I had looked at the materials. I forwarded everything over to him prior to this hearing.
I meant at the time it was heard before. It seems incomprehensible to me that now at this hearing, we are hearing for the first time, it's a whole mix-up in photographs. These photographs weren't, not there before.
In all due respect, I didn't present at the last hearing. In fact, I didn't ask for the continuance.
Excuse me, Mr. James, could you speak into the microphone, please?
At the last hearing, the reason I asked for continuance is because we were at the very last of the thing and everybody, including people on this panel, needed to go to graduations, including myself. We never even presented anything to this. And our request for continuance had nothing to do with this application and everything to do with trying to respect the board's time. So I, I find that disingenuous to accuse us of, of being dishonest with you back then and then trying to be dishonest with you now because that's not the case.
You've had several weeks to raise-
Hundreds of clients.
Okay, so we, we have to wait until the hearing date to hear that everything is mixed up. The pictures are wrong and-
This would be our first opportunity to present that, Mr. Landish. And we have presented it.
Couldn't you have approached the, the planning department?
Actually, the planning department isn't, isn't open to listening to us about trying to fix things like that. They want things to go to the planning commission and the board of supervisors. They're not interested in withdrawing the, the denials in order to address the issues once they've issued their denials. So I would love the opportunity to work with the planning department. However, that's not the instruction that they have been given.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm just, I'm going to slow this down just a bit. Let's go back to when we were here last time. There were a lot of people that needed to go to graduation. Unfortunately, the commissioners didn't. We stayed here until almost eight o'clock that night. We allowed you to be dismissed because he had to go to a graduation, which we respected. At the last hearing, you would have been prepared to have this. You did not know you were going to get a continuance. So I think the point that he's trying to say is, a month ago, you were in this room prepared to give and, and have your hearing.
We would have been just surprised, as surprised when the presentation happened last time as we are today.
In the staff report, those photos are there. Now, I want to go back to Mr. Gunsel because nothing has changed in that staff report in my memory or anybody else's on this panel. Those are the same pictures we looked at a month ago. But I want to go back to just speaking to number seventeen because originally when we were having you come up, it was to give us a presentation for three different appeals because they cross over on each other. But right now, we don't have that presentation before us. So I don't want to talk about lot fifty-one right now. What I want to do is talk about lot seventeen. You say the pictures that are submitted are the wrong pictures and that there is only one photo that was submitted with one plant. Is that a correct statement?
And I have not seen the picture here.
Okay, but in your testimony, you said a little while ago, you submitted one picture with one plant, correct?
I believe so. I, I can go back and verify that.
Okay, how does one plant equate to 22,000-foot grow? Because I am looking at the Terra Server photos and you're telling me that you have a history of agricultural processing on this land, but when I look at those photos, I don't see it. So I guess what I'm looking for, and I'm speaking strictly to item number seventeen. I'm not talking to the other appeals right now. Did you have a 22,000-foot square grow going on that property before May tenth?
Not in cannabis, no.
Okay, okay. That's specifically, for me, that's what I'm seeing the, the planning department's denial was for. So that's where, that's where I'm at with that one. Now, we still have the other two to, to look at.
We understand. Thank you.
Okay, are you-
I also have a question as to seventeen. My understanding was that you were saying that you've been organically farming seventeen through the years?
Yes, for twenty years.
Including twenty fifteen?
I had plants there in twenty fifteen. It has always been my backup, like underground, under the trees in case two fifteen doesn't work and they take my product. I can still have medicinal cannabis.
Now, in your appeal letter, it says that you're, you've, that this parcel had been rested for a couple of years.
Yes. Well, the garden itself, that, that, you can see that it's a, a big garden area. Yes, it's been fallow for several years now.
But not the entire property? Is that what you're saying?
The entire area?
Well, what cannabis growth did you have there in twenty fifteen?
It was under my oak trees.
In twenty fifteen?
So that could be hidden. Yes, it was every year.
Did you write this letter yourself?
Yes, they did.
In the letter, it actually says that it was rested for a couple of years. And then number two says the photographs shown as evidence of cannabis cultivation were grown in the woods of parcel seventeen, not in the cultivation area. We can assure you they are not false nor misleading.
Right, we were, we were growing underneath trees. It was illegal at the time. I, I had to. I couldn't grow out there in that open field.
But it says that the photo shown is evidence. So then you're saying that the photos that we have are wrong.
No, these photos were of parcel fifty-one.
They're referring to the application. When they did the appeal letters, they didn't have anything but their, their records when they wrote their appeal letters. That was before they hired me.
So they had the photos when they wrote that letter?
No, they had what, they have their records and their application. That's what they were basing their-
Including the photos that they say they submitted with?
Whatever they submitted, correct.
Ah, I thought you said they did not have copies of those photos.
We don't have copies of the, of the total application, which we don't have.
Where are those copies?
I have them. I didn't bring them with me.
Well, see, we're presented with a situation where you are claiming that the planning department has the wrong photos. There weren't the photos that you submitted.
Right.
And we don't have the photos that you say you submitted.
I was under the assumption that you had those. When I applied originally, the photos were there in the packet for seventeen. I have the exact packet at my home.
Mrs. James, did you file any briefs on these appeals?
No, I did not.
Okay, thank you.
I did not have copies of their application in order to do that.
Okay, so if you're, have any further comment? I'd like to go to public comment and then we can come back to rebut whatever we need to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't even see if you had further questions. Are you okay?
I'll ask questions later.
I'm sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Calling Plot in Mid Valley Springs and the Planning Coalition. It seems to me that it was brought out by the commissioners that there just isn't any demonstrated evidence of 22,000 square feet of cultivation. If it was in the trees or wherever, there's, there's no evidence. So I don't know. It seems pretty cut and tried to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Is there any further public comment? Okay. We'll close public comment and come back to Paul. Do you have anything you want to rebut on that?
Yes, there is stuff I want to rebut on that. First of all, yes, they don't have a complete application to show us. They don't have any proof that, you know, they submitted an application with one single photograph in it. Our applications, when they come in, they were scanned in, okay? So we actually have two records. We have, we have the record, the paper file, and we also have the scanned documents. And those, those are scanned before we actually start any of the processing of these applications. I went back and looked at our scanned docs. Those are the same exact four photographs that are in our scanned documents. So there's no reason to believe that there was a single photograph in this. The other thing, when I, I don't know what happened with these files prior to me picking these up and processing the appeals on them. However, when I picked them up, those four photographs were in this file. And also when I picked all of these, of these, all of these, these three appeal files up, I went to the top of each photograph I went to the top of each photograph and I wrote what the project number was on each one, just to prevent this kind of, you know, cross circulation between files. I did that when I started working with these files. And again, the photographs that are in our paper file match the scanned documents. I think the point that was just made about twenty-two thousand square feet of cultivation occurring on this site and being, actually having the area to do that. I mean, if you look at the site right there, I don't know that there's enough room underneath all of the, underneath all of the oak trees on this site to actually pull twenty-two thousand square feet together. That's your site right there. You got a couple scattered oak trees. It just doesn't exist. So if you were to accept his argument, there's no way that he could have possibly had cultivated commensurate amount of cannabis to meet the requirements of the code. One thing that Mrs. James just said too is the unwillingness of the planning department to work on appeals or work with clients regarding any issues that may come up. That is totally incorrect. I would point to the Thomas appeal where there was a charge withdrawn based upon a complaint by the sheriff. We have actually rescinded, totally rescinded, I don't know what, maybe a handful of denials in our office. I think that's about it. But when we are giving evidence that contradicts what our assumptions are on these appeals, we take a look at it and we investigate it. And so that accusation on her part is totally false. And the fact that they did not approach us and provide us with any kind of evidence to the contrary is not up to us. That was their choice. I think that's it for my rebuttal.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. James, would you like to come up with any rebuttal on this one? Okay, thank you. Okay, I think that Commissioner Wooster had some questions and I quickly went to public comment and I apologize for that. Do you still have questions you'd like to ask?
Just one. We have to have under the ordinance photographic evidence of cultivation commensurate with the area proposed to be developed. And I understand that you're saying that you were cultivating under the trees earlier. Where is the photographic evidence of the cultivation under the trees?
I'm sorry, can you please come up to the mic, Mr. Gunsel?
I was only able to find one photograph, as far as I remember, of one obscure plant that was on that parcel.
Just one plant?
Yes, I was not out taking pictures of my plants back in those days, not in the least, but.
Thank you.
We, we, there, there were other photos, but as, as I've explained, those were all of fifty-one.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for discussion.
Not much to be said. It's just a simple failure of proof. Under the urgency ordinance, there's just no photographic evidence that's required.
Thank you. I have to agree, yes. This is easy.
I think it included an admission of not having cultivated it.
Well, not only not having cultivated it, but not having anywhere near twenty-two thousand square feet of cultivation. One question I have, the denial would be just as effective if we deny it on the first ground as failure to submit evidence of grading or earth moving or cultivation commensurate. I would not object to eliminating the second ground if it were false and misleading. Since at least some question has been raised, I'm not convinced with the, that we've been supplied with any evidence that false and misleading evidence was not submitted, but that ground may not be necessary. I throw that open for discussion.
I would be comfortable with that. I mean, they raised the possibility that, you know, there were, what, four applications all submitted at the same time. They may have been mixed up by the applicant. They may have been mixed up by the county when those applications were received. Frankly, I find that difficult to believe only because of the process that we use in taking in the applications to ensure that they didn't get mixed up. But I can't say, you know, categorically that that could not have happened. So if, you know, but it's just as likely that he got them mixed up when he submitted them to us. So there may not have been an intent to deceive the county with that. It may have just been a simple mix-up. So I think based on that. I think the real issue here is there was no cultivation going on that, on that parcel. If there was, there was some back in the trees, as stated. The site plan that was submitted shows twenty-two thousand square feet in the open area. And clearly, from the photographs we've seen, that did not occur. If, if, as he said, there was twenty years of organic farming, there would be evidence of some type of agricultural activity, whether it was tomatoes or lettuce or whatever you might have been farming there. You would see that even if it had laid fallow, the ground would be different. There would be either open earth or if there was a cover crop, it would show up differently than the native grasses that are on the site. There's no evidence of that whatsoever. So I think the stronger position here is that cultivation did not occur, certainly did not occur to the degree that was applied for and therefore not meet the criteria for having previously cultivated as of May tenth. And there's certainly no evidence of that either.
But he's admitted that the photos he submitted were for a different parcel.
That's correct.
And that's false and misleading?
Well, it, if it was a mix-up, I would say it's probably not misleading. You know, if it was, if he had, yeah. I will take his word for it that these were not intended to be associated with this picture, with this application. In that case, it's, you know, probably not the strongest grounds to base our denial on. I think the stronger ground, as Mr. Lattes points out, was that there was no cultivation, at least not to that degree and certainly not consistent with the site plan that was submitted in figure one.
Do, do we know whether the photographs that are in our file for seventeen were in fact submitted for parcel fifty-one?
I don't know that. We, to our knowledge, these were the photographs that were submitted with this application for parcel seventeen. It wasn't until just now that we heard that, oh, those weren't supposed to be in that file. Those are supposed to be in another file. Mrs. James wants to blame us for that. I don't believe that's the case, but I cannot prove that that's not the case.
Well, fifty-one is coming up later. And we don't have any photographs of cultivation with respect to fifty-one in what we were given. So to me, we could check and see whether these three photographs do show up in that, in that file, which would support his view that that's what they were submitted for.
What project number is that, that he said it was on fifty-one?
Well, in our packages, we have.
Six fifty-six.
They're different photos. I already looked.
Except for photo dated, let's see, what was it? March twenty-six sixteen, in this first package, there, it's a vertical photograph, I believe, or it's a horizontal photograph. Anyhow, in the third package, we have the same subject is there, but the format of the picture is different. So we have some duplication, but it would appear to me that it was a representation, that it was a representation of cultivation and preparation for each of the parcels. There, there's one photograph that has the same content in part. I'm just suggesting that maybe for this.
I'm, yeah, I'm okay with, with agreeing with you that it was probably in error, not so much trying to be misleading, but the twenty-two thousand square feet is a definite issue for me because one picture of one plant doesn't justify twenty-two thousand square feet. And the Terra server photos definitely present that there was not a garden there. And he also admitted when I asked the question that May tenth, the garden was not there. So it's, it's completely up to you guys. I, I don't think he was trying to mislead us, but I also, well, you know, I gotta go back on that. Because if you're telling me you were growing twenty-two thousand square feet by May tenth and then you tell me you're not growing twenty-two thousand, that is misleading as well. It is referencing the photos, though. I think the wrong photos were submitted in error, but the misleading doesn't apply to the photos. It applied to the grow. So I, what would you guys like to do with that?
Take it out.
I'd like to keep it.
So I have a take it out and I have a keep it and it, what do you want to do, Commissioner Wooster?
I'm more comfortable taking it out.
Okay, one, two.
I am two, and I, I think then on our first ground, on the evidence, we should not refer to the photographs because we don't need to. We can just say there are no photographs providing, provided showing evidence of grading or earth moving. Take out the second sentence and then leave in the third sentence about aerial imagery. And I think we've got our case well established without any grounds for saying, oh, but the photographs for next time.
I'm not sure we want to remove them so that they're there for future reference on this case if this ever was to come back. Removing, referencing those photos as a part of this appeal is important to me.
Okay, I, I just, we don't need to rely upon them.
Correct.
And they are the point of contention here.
But, but this whole hearing was based upon that in the, in the beginning. And I want them to stay in reference on that appeal. So read your language again, please.
Well, I don't know that's, okay. I, I would say the first sentence under evidence, under, under the first ground is there are no photographs, instead of the four evidence photographs, there are no photographs provided showing evidence of grading or earth moving. And that's clear. We don't have to reference the photographs.
Okay, look at the resolution, the proposed resolution, item one on the second, the second page.
That's where I am.
It almost exactly what it says, the way you just worded it.
I'm, I'm reading from the resolution.
Oh, I thought you were looking.
He's reading from the evidence.
The evidence of the resolution. Then I, I was suggesting we take out the, the reference in section, or sentence two to the evidence photos. But if, if you don't want to do that, that's, that's fine. And then cut in with the third sentence saying aerial imagery from Terra server, blah, 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 shows no cannabis cultivation areas, no irrigation, no frost protection. And then I would eliminate the last sentence, which has that, refers to the other evidence photo. It's just that we, we don't need to rely upon the photos to deny this.
Yeah, but if we have three other appeals before us that are trying to be tied into all of this, I want this reference. I want history of it in here.
I'd suggest my, my change to the first sentence, it doesn't take out references to the photo, I mean, you don't have to refer to the four evidence photographs there. You can just say there are no photographs provided showing evidence of grading or earth movement. And then leave the rest of that paragraph the same.
What about a sentence where the applicant admitted he hadn't done it?
You could do that.
In addition.
Well, these, these four evidence photographs are in the file. They probably were submitted by the applicant. They were probably submitted by mistake, but they're there. And that's what we have. And so, as I said, I'm comfortable, I'm more comfortable removing the second ground for denial, which is a, if it's intentional submission of false or misleading information based on his testimony. But I think it better to leave in the evidence on defining number one the way it is. Because it's consistent with what's in the file that we're dealing with.
That's fine with me.
Okay, I'm good with that. Okay, would, would you like to read the recommendation as amended? Peter, you're okay with those changes?
Yeah. Recommendation is staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution two zero one seven dash zero two nine, denying appeal two zero one six six five four, thereby opposing the planning director's determination to deny application two zero one six dash six five four as amended.
Thank you.
The amendment being to delete finding number two, correct?
Correct.
Based on that, I saw move.
Second then?
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post? Five oh, thank you. Okay. So we will move on to appeal number two, which is two zero one six six five five. And Paul, I'm thinking you're handling this one as well.
All right. This is appeal number two zero one six six five five. Norman Gunsel and Amy Volk Gunsel appealing a denial of a commercial cannabis registration by the planning director. This registration was denied for the following reasons. The cultivation area was not set back required, the required seventy-five feet from the property line. The cultivation area was not secured by a lock. And the application pending certificate was not properly posted at the cultivation site. There's our location. It's four point five five acres, approximately seven hundred feet west of Adolby Gulch Road at a point approximately one half mile north of the intersection of Case City Road and Adolby Gulch Road in Mountain Ranch. Again, township four, north range thirteen east, section nine. And of course, all of these are in district number two. But this is right behind the one we just were taking a look at. And this is the relationship that you see right here. We were just on six five four. We're now on six five five. Adjacent to six five five is six five three. We're going to be talking about that. I'd like you to notice that there is a common property line between these two parcels right here. And you can see the cultivation area. You can see it goes across the property line and parts of it are on both parcels. On June twenty-ninth, applicants Norman Gunsel and Amy Volk Gunsel applied for a commercial cannabis registration for twenty-two thousand square feet of outdoor cultivation area. And that was the registration pending that they were granted. This complaint involves some activity on the part of code compliance. And I'd just like to do a quick review of the history of the code inspections out on this parcel. The first inspection occurred on July twentieth, two thousand sixteen. That was by Officer Reva Davis. She went to the, she went to the parcel. She noted that the cultivation area was within the setback. The application pending certificate was not properly posted. And the cultivation area was unlocked. It was unsecured. At that time, she advised the registrants of these violations, told them that they would be inspected again and that those violations should be taken care of prior to the next inspection. The next inspection occurred on January seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. And that was by Officers Thomas Watts and Courtney Minehart. What they found there again was that the cultivation area was within the setback. The application pending certificate had, was not posted at all at that time. And the cultivation area again was unlocked and unsecured. Following up on that inspection, the appellant was given a ten-day notice. That was sent to them on January nineteenth. They gave them ten days beginning January twentieth to correct the deficiencies that were noted in the inspection. On the twenty-first of January, the registrant acknowledged receiving the notice and asked for more time to complete those tasks. Code, a couple of days later, asked them what's going to take more time. There was no response. But on January thirty-first, the registrant informed code compliance that some progress had been made. The next day, code asked that the registrant send them photographs as proof of any corrections they made, that might have been made. And they didn't see that. On February third, code told them to respond by February fourteenth with any proof of corrections or whatever evidence they had to show that they had brought those violations into compliance. Following that, there was no response from the appellant, no proof of the corrections, any other response that I could find in the record. At that point, on February fourteenth, code referred this project back to the planning department with a recommendation for denial. The first cause for, reason for denial is the setback issue. And that comes from section seventeen ninety-five one sixty-five N eight, which reads as follows, "The cultivation area of an outdoor or mixed light light commercial cannabis cultivation site shall be set back at least seventy-five feet." shall be set back at least seventy-five feet from any property line. That's pretty straightforward. What you see on the screen right here are two different plot plans submitted on the subject parcel. That's this one up here. And the plot plan below is on the adjacent parcel. The red dash line is the common property line, we saw that in the aerial, so those two abut. What's very interesting on these, on both of these, is that on both of them, they show a seventy-five foot setback from that common property line. So what the appellant told us when he submitted the application, not only on the parcel we're discussing, but on the adjacent parcel, is that these grows would be separated by a hundred and fifty feet, seventy-five feet off of each side. Let's move on. We'll go back to that first code inspection of July twentieth. What they found when they arrived there was that the registrant had combined both of those grows into one large grow area. The combined grow area straddled the property. And as you can see, they had posted that one single cultivation site with the application pending registrations for both applications. And what that looks like from the air is this. This is a county aerial that's taken on August twentieth. This is a month after that July twentieth inspection, obviously. And the July twentieth inspection was when they were told the first time you need a seventy-five foot setback from the property line. It's pretty obvious that has not occurred. You can see that there is cultivation with that set, within the setback and it actually crosses over the property line. Onto the inspection of January seventeenth. They observed, Minehart and Watts observed that that setback violation was still continuing. As part of the notice, the ten day notice that was sent on January nineteenth, they were advised to perform a couple of things. They were informed that, yes, the seventy-five foot setback must be maintained from both property lines. And the appellate instructed, excuse me, code instructed the appellant to contact the planning department to discuss any alternatives that might be available. And to the best of my knowledge, we never heard from them at that time. So that was part of the denial that was issued on this, obviously. And because of those repeated failures, first of all, he knew that we had, he had to maintain the seventy-five foot setback. We saw that on the plot plans. He was advised to maintain that setback on the July twentieth inspection and again on the January seventeenth inspection. Also, I believe on the January seventeenth inspection, he told Officer Courtney Minehart that he had called planning and had been told in that telephone call, those setbacks had to be maintained. There was plenty of notice here. And because of those repeated violations, being notified, he was denied. The second cause for denial on this application is failure to secure the cultivation area. And that comes under county code section seventeen ninety-five, one sixty-five and ten. And it reads as follows, an outdoor or mixed light cultivation area shall be fully enclosed by a six foot tall fence of a material and string that are reasonably, that reasonably prevents against access by trespassers and children. Access to the cultivation area shall be secured by a lock of reasonable strength to prevent access by trespassers and children. So it's required that the cultivation area is secured by a lock. Code inspection on July twentieth. This is the entry gate and you can see there is a chain laying on the ground. But at that time, Officer Davis did not find a lock to lock that gate with, using the chain, I would suspect. And therefore, she told them they were in violation, advised them again to correct that prior to the next inspection. January seventeenth, this inspection, again, same gate, same chain, still no lock. After that inspection, the ten day notice was issued, giving the appellant the time, ten days to go out and buy a lock and put it on the gate. We did not see any evidence that that had occurred. Just never happened. For that reason, they failed to meet the requirements of section seventeen ninety-five, one sixty-five and ten and were denied. And the final cause for denial is this right here. Posting requirements, and that comes from, let's see here. Where did I go? County code section seventeen ninety-five, one sixty-five I. And it reads, current registration document issued by the planning department must be weatherproofed invisibly and clearly posted within ten feet of the ingress of the cultivation area. It shall be posted between four and six feet above the ground, on a durable rigid rectangular signboard, no less than eighteen inches per side, containing reflective material sufficient to allow an enforcement official to readily locate it with the flashlight. And those instructions are, are right on that application pending form, I'm sure you all know. Code inspection on July twentieth, found the conditions you see in the photograph right there on the screen. There was a dual posting. However, neither of those had the signboard or the required reflective material. Again, they're advised on July twentieth verbally. They are in violation, take care of this prior to the next inspection, which was on January seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. And at that time, Officer Watts found that there was absolutely no posting at all. So that was a complete failure to have the site posted. They were given again the ten days to comply. There was no, there's no evidence that they complied with that. They didn't provide any documentation that they had posted this within ten days. In the appellant's appeal letter, they made the following responses. They said the setbacks were addressed during the July and January inspections, awaiting a response from code regarding setback where adjacent parcels have same owner. Regarding securing the cultivation area, they said the locks were not in place because at the time of inspection, cultivation was not occurring. And regarding the posting, they stated the existing posting was damaged in the heavy rains, new ones will be posted. That completes my presentation. If you have any questions?
Okay. Mrs. James, would you and the appellant like to come up and?
Good morning, Chanel James appearing for the appellant. So this denial is based on, on code inspection violations, obviously not on anything else. So one of the problems, and it was in the appeal letter, he said that they weren't, they didn't have email access. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with that area that's out there, but apparently the email access is sketchy at best. I do have photos that would have been able to be submitted had they had internet access. I'll have my applicant tell you why they weren't submitted sooner. And I'll have him address the sixty, the seventy-five foot setback as well. But if I could approach, so I could. There. There are three photos here. Actually, I'll show them to Paul first and then I'll approach for the, the commission if that's okay. Thank you. These photos also, one of them also shows the locks, the, with the chain as well, so.
Thank you.
I'll give you a moment to review those and then when you're ready, I'll have my applicant come up and approach the other issues with the setback.
The one with the two postings, why are you doing two postings? Is there a reason for doing that?
It's one grow that in, that involves the two parcels. It's one fence, one gate, it's been there for many years.
Okay.
Yes?
She was gonna finish presenting. I'm sorry, Ms.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I have an unusual situation. If I may ask for a brief break so that I can address Peter off the record on something? I would appreciate it, may result in whether or not we do the next appeal or not.
Okay, we'll take a ten minute break, thank you.
If, at this time, I'd like to have my client go ahead and address the issue with the seventy-five foot setback. Oops, sorry.
Yes, thank you again. On the, on the issue of the seventy-five foot setback, in our, in our January inspection, the officers and I walked in that grow and we had quite a lengthy conversation about that setback situation. It was a very informal conversation I had with one of the officers. I was telling them that I would be willing to set this back, that it's gonna be a hundred and fifty foot, which is gonna take this huge swath out of the garden, which means I'm going to have to move my fence and open up whole, all new ground. That this was basically one grow. And the officer said, and I'm pretty much quoting, that the, the reason for the setback, and I, and I told him at the time, I said, I understand if there's a neighbor on the other side of the fence, I mean, they want seventy-five feet from the property line. But since I own both parcels and they're, and we're asking for a permit to grow on each parcel, we own them free and clear, why does it have to be such a large setback? And his, his response was, well, it's really so that from, from aerial observation, we can see where the property line is. And I said, well, I totally understand that. We know pretty much where the property line is, not exact, but pretty much. And I'd be more than willing to leave a given setback so that we have a nice straight line. So when they fly over and they've got a rough idea of where the property line is, oh, well, here's this big swath through it. And it certainly shouldn't have to be a hundred and fifty feet. And he totally agreed with me and was going to look into it, pretty much quote unquote, but I never heard anything back. I went ahead and planted less than a hundred and fifty feet. We have a swath through there, it's very clear, so that when planes fly over, they can see exactly where the property line is. Since it was not, since I was never informed, look, you have to have a hundred and fifty feet. It was kind of left more or less vague to me. And like I said, this was an informal conversation that I had with this officer.
Could I ask you about the, your plot plans showed the seventy-five foot setback?
Right, right.
So you understood that that's what the ordinance required?
I did, that's right. That's right, I did, but in, in conversing with the officers.
Not, not, now, before you conversed with any officer?
Sure.
You laid things out so it was across the property line? And that was for grounds of efficiency? Was that because it's just more efficient to do that than to have two separate fenced?
Of course, the, the garden has been, like I said, established for almost twenty years. The soil is built up, the irrigation system is there.
But that's, that's why you, you didn't follow the plot plan was because it made sense to you to do it this way?
It's just so impractical. It's so impractical to do that.
When you filed your application to, for the grow, which had been turned in by June, you also turned in your plot plans for all your properties?
Right, right, right.
And then you continued to grow anyway, so.
Karen, can you turn your mic on?
I'm sorry. So basically, when you turned in your applications to grow, you already knew you were gonna grow on that one?
We had already been growing there when we applied, everything was already established there.
Okay, so you'd already been growing there, but when you turned in your application, somebody drew these plot plans?
Sure.
Saying that you were gonna grow here, not on the, where you did grow, and that you were gonna have seventy-five foot setbacks, because it shows it on all the applications that you've turned in. But you chose to grow where you were growing anyway, correct?
We already were growing. If the, if the county had insisted that we move, we would have.
I understand that, you were already growing there, but you knew when you turned in your application, you were gonna have to change it because you drew the prop plant, prop fence.
Right, but then when, on our January inspection, it was, I hesitate to use the word vague.
But the January inspection was after you turned in the June application.
Of course.
So in June, you turned in application saying that this is where you were gonna grow.
Sure, sure.
But you grew there anyway.
We had been, we were growing there when we applied. The plants were already there.
So this was out in the open?
Oh, of course, yeah.
So this wasn't under open trees or like the other?
Oh, no, 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 no.
What were you growing?
This was cannabis.
Okay. For twenty years?
Oh, no. Off and on, but not continuously for twenty years, of course not, this was our organic vegetable garden.
And how large was that grow? How large?
I don't, nobody ever went out and measured it. And it was, it was broken up. There were various areas, there were some areas that were open ground, some that was, the, the plants were close together, some of the plants were further apart.
Okay, so the reasoning behind two parcels that you're saying, because I own both, I should be able to grow across both. It, it, it doesn't, even, even with the state licensing, that would be an issue. Because you're gonna be applying for four state licenses with what you currently had. They have to be separate parcels. They have setbacks, so you would have been out of compliance all the way around. If the grow was not forty-four thousand square feet, you couldn't split it off into two different parcels. If it was only twenty-two thousand square feet, you have to move it one way or the other. So the amount of grow is, is critical. When you look at it as one grow, how much square footage is on each lot and do you have to move seventy-five from each lot line? That's, that's kind of a problem. I mean, in, in, in being a separate parcel, you could sell one parcel, then you still have an out of compliance issue. You knew what the compliance rules were in June, when you applied for your applications, because you submitted the plot maps. At that point in time, it was upon you to come into compliance with the urgency ordinance. It, it's not the code compliance officer's responsibility to be in compliance, it's yours. To wait until January for him to have to explain to you to fix it, it doesn't work for me.
Well, I, I, I had that conversation with him, like I said, it was rather informal. And we were talking about where it was going to be, where the plot was gonna be laid out the next, the next year, the next season. And we were talking about the impracticality of leaving this hundred and fifty foot swath right through the middle of the garden when I owned both sides and was applying for permission on both sides. So he, he understood too, and, and we talked about this, it's like, well, why would it have to be a hundred and fifty feet? Why couldn't, why can't it be smaller? So that's what I went ahead and did, having not heard anything back from anybody about it.
Well, I, I think knowing the rules, knowing that you have to be seventy-five feet off of each lot is, is pertinent to me in the urgency ordinance. It doesn't matter if it's a hundred and fifty foot swath. It, it, that's, it's no different than anybody else coming before us saying, but my neighbors are friendly, I should be thirty-three. "But my neighbors are friendly, I should be 30 feet from their house." It doesn't work. Okay, so is there any other portion of the presentation that you have for us?
I have a whole lot, but like I said, this was, it was a general presentation about our actual operation.
I have another question. On the July 20th, 2016 inspection, wasn't it made clear to you that you were in violation of the setbacks?
They made sure that I understood that it should've been set back, but I was not given specific orders.
Well, okay.
It was really very vague.
You weren't giving...
I was having a rather, you know, informal conversation with the officers and saw what the situation was at the time.
The ordinance is really clear.
Yes, I understand.
Okay, and when did you build the fence?
The fence? Oh, shoot, 18 years ago.
So there are some measurements on the 72016 inspection. It looks like code compliance did measure off some area there. I'd like to know what that total's up to, because I don't see the total. That's a Commissioner Wooster job.
I'm not sure I'm competent to do that.
Okay.
Are they gonna figure the number? I can't do that.
I don't know. I can do it if I get a calculator going here.
If it involves increments of six, I can do it, that's it, that's what I bill at, so.
Well, if there's not 44,000 square feet there, there's not two 22,000 square foot grows. I mean, that's an issue. And then the other issue that I have is something that you stated earlier was that he was not able to communicate via email because the email was down. When you're coming before me and you're running a business, if my email's down and I have to drive a document somewhere, I drive my document. So that's not an acceptable excuse for me because this is, you know, as everybody says, this is my living, this is my livelihood. Well, get in the car, drive that in there. I'm not gonna buy this, my email doesn't work because we live in a rural area and that is what we have to live with on a regular basis. Pre-email, we all drove to the county and took care of business. So that's a difficult one for me to deal with as well.
I appreciate your position.
Is there any further information that you want to provide for us? Or do we want to go to public comment?
No, we'll wait for public comment.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, Ms. James.
Yes.
It's probably pretty obvious, but was there cultivation going on in this parcel on July 20th of 2016?
Yes, there was.
And the photographs that you gave us of the posting, when were they put up, those?
Sometime in February after the rains had completed, but he can't remember the exact date of when.
Of this year?
That's correct.
Do those signboards have reflective material on them?
I do not believe that they do, other than the lamination themselves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any public comment on this appeal?
I just have a question because with my eyes and the screen and the resolution of these pictures, we have two lots and it's disputed whether we have 22,000 square foot grows on each lot or whether they're coming together or whether there's somehow divided up. What I don't see from these photographs on either lot is the dwelling that's necessary to have the grow. I don't know that...
You don't have to have a dwelling.
That's not a requirement under the urgency ordinance?
Not for commercial.
It's, aren't we operating under the urgency ordinance with this?
The urgency ordinance did not require a resident to be on the parcel for commercial cultivation.
Oh, I thought that was, the only exception was in the Butte Fire area where they were given some...
No.
So there doesn't have to be anyone there, no dwelling, no anything. They can sit there totally unattended.
Under the urgency ordinance, did not require to have a permanent residence on the property.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Colleen Platt of My Valley Springs. The 75-foot setback issue seems to be very clear in the ordinance and I believe it's up to the applicant to make any adjustments. It's their responsibility, not the planning department's responsibility. And the applicant knew that, he was quite aware of that. If he had questions, it was up to him to go to the planning department and make the adjustments or request a consideration. So it just seems to me that that, because you can find one person that works for the county that maybe isn't clear on the ordinance is not an excuse to not interpret the ordinance as the ordinance is really clearly stated with a setback, so, my opinion, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further public comment? Okay. We will close public comment and bring it back to see if you have any rebuttal you'd like to give.
Just a couple of things. Again, the photos that they have just submitted do not show the reflective material, so they are still out of compliance there. You addressed the email access. In regards to the January inspection, the appellant claims that he was left with a vague feeling that, with a vague explanation as to whether there could possibly be some sort of arrangement being the owner of the both adjacent parcels. Well, that inspection took place on the 17th. The response actually didn't necessarily come from, I believe he had that conversation with Mr. Minehart, but his response came two days later in the notice to correct and that came from Mr. Watts, who told him in this correction letter, "I have spoken to the director and he confirmed that there must be a 75-foot setback from each property line. Please speak to the planning department to discuss moving your cultivation area or alternatively, you may simply remove all the plants from the 75-foot setback zone." That's very direct, I would say. Nothing vague there at all. And I think that's it.
I'd like to add one comment. There's been some discussion about the lack of email access, but in the files, I think it's attachment five, there is copies of email exchange and Mr. Gunsel responded to Mr. Watts on January 21st as well as, I guess that's the only date that he responded to. So it wasn't down the whole time he had access to, you know, he had plenty of opportunity to follow up on any of the questions he might've had and to communicate with code compliance that he had complied with the requirements.
I also point out that Mr. Watts is here in the audience and if any of you have any questions for him, he can answer questions.
So I'm looking at, as I go back, and I'm looking at code compliance's notes on square footages. It looks like one of them was 22,000 square feet, GIS showing 12,881. And then the other one was 6,000 square feet. Because there's three different grow sites going on here, right? Okay. Are you still growing on the third one?
Yes.
315, 200. Okay. Does any of the commissioners have questions?
I have a question for the planning department and indirectly to code compliance. We keep coming up with even, notices given out this year with the words that these are the corrections that need to be made in order for the site to come into compliance with the urgency ordinance. And I highly question whether that language could continue. I should think it should be that they need to be made in order to avoid the fine that's gonna be given under the urgency ordinance. We have this implication here that if you do these compliance actions, why, it's going to cure everything that's happened before. And we know that can get us into complications. That's just an observation. I would hope that code compliance might not be using the same language now.
Code compliance shares your concerns. And after the Stapleton appeal occurred, we created a set of forms that have admonitions to that effect. That says at the bottom that regard, the code violations identified in this citation, and then we have triplicate forms and proof of service and all that now that indicates that just because you correct these doesn't mean that your site will be approved by the planning department.
Now, I have a copy maybe of an earlier form of that notice and it was kinda meaty-mouthed. It kinda went, "Not necessarily," or "Perhaps not," this sort of thing. Is it ironclad now that you're in violation, you're in violation?
Yeah, if, should any denials come before this commission that occurred as a basis for code compliance recommendations that occurred in late February through March and up to the present date, you'll find that the forms are quite clear.
We don't have a problem. If we do find that there has been no correction, why, then we don't have a problem with any particular results, but...
So you had indicated that there's fines associated with non-compliance with the urgency ordinance. There's sort of a dual process here. We're sort of in the first process right now of finding whether or not they were compliant. We have the planning department, I found that it was out of compliance. They had given an opportunity and that was really what those inspections were. It's like you've got 10 days, you've got a certain amount of time to come into compliance. And if you didn't, then the code enforcement process of Title 8.06 would kick in. And if, you know, they have exhausted their appeal process, then they would be cited and then they're subject to fines.
But I think it's important that it not just say to come into compliance with the urgency ordinance because that's the implication that we were dealing with before that got us into, well...
And we have evolved as we have learned. We're still essentially beta-testing this whole process.
Yes, well, I hope that language is different in the...
And we have become, you know, much more succinct in, you know, giving them from timeframes, exactly what needs to be done and if you don't comply, it will be denied.
Okay. So all of the, the code compliance issues in here, they're corrected except for the sign was not upright?
To my knowledge, none of them have been corrected.
So even all the trash is still there?
Oh.
Because that picture's pretty brutal.
There, I can't speak to that, Mr. Watts.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, Thomas Watts, code compliance. I haven't received any proof of corrections for any of these sites.
I didn't understand anything you said, I am so sorry.
I haven't received any proof of corrections for any of these sites. So as far as I'm aware, nothing's been fixed. It's all exactly the same as the last time I saw it.
Okay, thank you.
He's English.
And that's okay with me, but it was like he backed up and mumbled and I need people to speak up. I wanna know what's being said.
And one of those compliance requirements was to split the parcels, correct?
Uh, yes, to make this...
Get the 75-foot setback.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So reading through, do you have anything you'd like to rebut, Mrs. James?
Just briefly, these are code compliance issues. And my client has came and testified. There is issue with the setback, although I feel that the board could exercise its discretion and order him to fix that as part of any other normal code enforcement case and allow him to continue with the cultivation. Other items has been fixed. The reflective, I wasn't even aware of the reflective language in the ordinance, so I apologize if I didn't see that in the ordinance. I was more focused on how it's set up than anything else. I apologize for that, I would've had him do that, but... I think that these are, these are simple and mitigatable means to be able to fix in order to have an otherwise good application for a commercial cultivation. So I would just ask you to take that into consideration.
He was sent those notices in January and here we are, almost at the end of July, and he hasn't corrected any of those issues?
Well, he's corrected everything except for the reflective striping on the board and the setback. Right now, the setback's at 35 feet, not at 75 feet. So other than that, everything else has been corrected.
Okay. Does the commissioners have any further questions?
Nope.
Okay, I'm gonna close the hearing, bring it back and open for discussion here.
Okay. I'll begin.
Okay.
On the setback issue, I do think the urgency ordinance is clear. Much respect to the 75-foot from each property line. It seems to be clear on the record that the applicant was told on July 20th he needed to comply with that 75-foot setback. There's a January 19th, 2017 email that confirms that. And so it's been almost a year and it hasn't been done. On the posting, it's clear on the record that cultivation was occurring on this parcel on July 20th of 2016. That makes it qualify as a cultivation area under the urgency ordinance and therefore posting was required. There was posting, but it was not in compliance with the ordinance because it wasn't on a signboard, didn't have reflective material, and still does not. And on the fencing, the gate was not locked nor was a lock present on July 20th of 2016. Doesn't seem to be any question about that and that's required. So I think on all three grounds, the denial was proper and the appeal should be denied.
I agree with Kelly on all three items. I have an issue with the pictures they brought in today. They brought those pictures in today. We don't know when they were taken. They could've been taken today, they could've been taken yesterday. In my opinion, it was never in compliance. And in my opinion, this pitcher, when he submitted these applications, all the applications show setbacks. He knew in June that it had to have a setback. He continued to grow anyway, so...
I agree with both my predecessors and I just think that the applicant has done what he felt was appropriate as a farmer or rancher, which we all do or would like to do, but the rules are the rules. It doesn't look like you followed them, sorry.
And I just will agree without further comment.
I have a question on the resolution. It states that three, under evidence number three, three evidence photographs submitted by the registrants have the same image but have three different dates of October 2013, September 2014, and October 2015.
I think you're looking at the wrong resolution.
I feel better. Thought I was losing my morals, okay. And the pictures are the same in both of those applications, okay. Got it. I'm back with you now. Okay, so I don't have a whole lot to say that I haven't already said. I think that it was very clear, the 75-foot setback. No communication is not an excuse for me and so I'm ready to hear the recommendation.
And I do have a suggestion on the resolution. I can wait until the recommendation.
Make sure you're on the right one.
Yes, right. It's just under number two, after the first sentence, should be a period instead of a comma. And then the next sentence... And then the next sentence, access to the cultivation area shall be secured by a lock of reasonable strength to prevent against, the word against is in the quote. Since that's a quote of the ordinance.
Okay.
Can you do that?
Yes.
Then under the evidence for number two, the last sentence is the registrants in their appeal letter of March thirty-first, twenty seventeen, should be admit, not admits.
Very good. That's it?
Okay. Would you like to read the, do you have any further?
Yes.
Would you like to read the recommendation, please?
Absolutely. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution two zero one seven dash zero three zero, denying appeal two zero one six dash six five five. Thereby upholding the planning director's determination to deny application two zero one six dash six five five as amended.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
I move we adopted as amended.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Five oh. Peter, would you like to read the appeal process for the, we didn't do that in the last one. I need to make sure we do.
And this applies to the previous item as well, that this action is final unless appealed within fifteen calendar days from today's date to the board of supervisors.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number three of appeal number two zero one six six five six.
Okay. This is appeal number two zero one six six five six. Norman Gunsel and Amy Bolt Gunsel, appealing a denial of commercial cannabis registration by the planning director. This is an appeal of a denial of commercial cannabis registration by the planning director and the registration was denied for the following three reasons. First, the cultivation areas were not secured by locks. Fencing was incomplete at one cultivation area and leaving it unsecured. The second reason is the application pending certificate was not posting, posted at the cultivation site. And finally, the application for registration contained false or misleading information. Again, this is right where all the rest of them are, except a little closer into town. That's your site right there, forty acres located at eighty-three eighty Carabaldi Street, Mountain Ranch. Again, township for North Range thirteen east, section four, district two. And it has come out here of Aldi Street from Mountain Ranch and Land Rising and property. And here we are, the relationship to the other three parcels. We were just on six five four and six five five. This is six five six. It's a nice big forty acre parcel. There's actually three cultivation sites on this parcel. There's one in this area, there's one over there. And what we will be talking about is the trailer site, I believe is located under the trees in this general area right there. On June twenty-ninth, the applicants Norman Gunsel and Amy Bolt Gunsel have filed a commercial cannabis registration for twenty-two thousand square feet of outdoor cultivation area and that's what they were granted for this parcel. And again, the code inspection history, this is code-based, basically a code-based denial. Two out of three complaints. Let's go through the history again real quick here. Code inspection, the first inspection was on July twentieth, two thousand sixteen. At that time, it was noted that cultivation areas were unlocked and unsecured. There's also one cultivation site, the trailer area, which did not, was not entirely enclosed by fencing. The application pending certificate was not posted and the registrants were advised of these violations and advised that they needed to be corrected prior to the next inspection. And that occurred on January seventeenth. The violations at that time where the cultivation areas were still unlocked and the section of fence of the trailer cultivation area had not been enclosed, leaving it unsecured. And the application pending certificate again was not posted. Following up on the January seventeenth inspection, on January nineteenth, code informed the registrant they had ten days to correct these violations beginning January twentieth. The registrant acknowledged that again on January twenty-first that they had received that notice and requested they have, take a little, take more time. We, code asked what will require more time two days later, no response. On January thirty-first, the registrant told code again that some corrections were in progress. And again, on February first, code asked for proof. Let's see some snapshots, let's see some evidence that you have made the corrections that were requested and there was no response to that. On February third, the registrant was advised to provide that proof by February fourteenth. To that request again, there was no response, no proof of corrections. And after that, on February fifteenth, code referred this to the planning department with the recommendation for denial. The first cause for, first, excuse me, reason for denial was the failure to secure the cultivation areas. And that's a requirement of seventeen ninety-five, one sixty-five, and ten. And again, that reads, an outdoor mix-like cultivation area shall be fully enclosed by a six-foot tall fence of a material and strength that reasonably prevents against access by trespassers and children. Access to the cultivation area shall be secured by a lock of reasonable strength to prevent access by trespassers and children. What you see there is the plot plan that was submitted with the application. It shows three different cultivation areas, there, there, and there. On each of those cultivation areas, you'll see a note that there's a six-foot fence. And also on each of those three cultivation areas, you'll see there is a note of a locked gate. So it's pretty plain that the appellant understood that the locked gates were required to secure the cultivation area and also that a fence was required to enclose the cultivation area. This is a code inspection of July twentieth. At that time, code found that there were no locks on the gates. That would have been on two of the three cultivation areas. Again, they would have advised the, they, they did advise the appellant that that was a violation and that needed to be corrected prior to the next inspection, which occurred on January twenty-seventh. And you can see on January twenty-seventh, there is still no lock on that gate. There is the same clip, you know, attached to the chain closing the gate, but no lock. And again, there was, the notice was issued, giving them ten days to comply and the appellant provided no proof that they had complied by providing the lock on these gates. At the trailer cultivation area, the issue was enclosing the cultivation area with a fence all the way around. Actually, this one shows it best. You can see there's a porch, well, there's a trailer there and in front of the trailer is this porch and you can just step off the porch and into the cultivation area. There's a simple rail, probably about three feet high off of the deck, but there's no fencing going across there. There's nothing to prevent a person just walking up onto that deck and stepping down into the cultivation area. So on July twentieth, that's what was observed by code inspectors on the site. They advised the appellant that they needed to make their fence continuous to secure the cultivation area. And that would be looked for in the next inspection, which occurred on January seventeenth. When inspectors went back on that date, they found again that it was still wide open. It hadn't been secured. They were given the ten days to comply again. And again, no proof was submitted to code compliance to show that they had actually corrected that. So the fencing and the locks, basically three unsecured cultivation areas and repeated observations of that, that was the reason for denying this application. Wrong direction, onto the next one, which is failure to meet the poster requirements. And that's based on section seventeen ninety-five, one sixty-five I. And that requires that their registration document must be weatherproofed invisibly and clearly posted within ten feet of the ingress of the cultivation area. It shall be posted between two and four sixty above the ground on a durable, rigid, and rectangular signboard of no less than eighteen inches per site containing reflective material sufficient to allow an enforcement official to readily locate it with a flashlight after dark. Those instructions actually are right on, right there, right on the registering, registration pending application. So it's pretty apparent that that's what is required. The code inspection of July twentieth, two thousand and sixteen found, there was no posting at all at any of the three cultivation area. This, the registration was not posted. They were advised to post it and again told that this will be looked for the next time an inspector shows up on the site, so please make the correction. On January seventeenth, code inspectors were on the site again. And again, there was no application pending certificate found posted. Again, the ten-day notice is given beginning on January twentieth. No follow-up to that, no proof that this had been corrected. So they were denied for not posting their cultivation area. They failed to meet seventeen ninety-five, one sixty-five I. This is our final cause for denial on this registration and that is false and misleading information. Under section seventeen ninety-five, one seventy-eight, four, the planning director is given the authority to revoke the pending registration with any applicant who submitted false or misleading information. Within this package, we found these three photographs, there were nine photographs altogether submitted. These are, this is three of the nine. And what we, you know, when you take, it doesn't take much to take a good close look at this and see that this is obviously the same image. You have the same plant in the foreground right here. If you take a look at the leaves down at the bottom of it, it's the same weeds, it's the same fence on the side, same fence posted across the back, there's a ladder, there's a ladder. Obviously the same photograph. However, we have three different dates. We have October twenty-first, two thousand thirteen, September twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, October third, two thousand fifteen.
I would point out, I think the October twenty-first, twenty thirteen is of the same plants at the same time, but it's actually a different image. I mean, the, the trees are in slightly, I mean, the camera was in a slightly different perspective.
Yes, it is a slightly different. I, I would say the image of the cannabis, yes, to be correct, is, it, you know, the image of the cannabis is the same. So it's, it's hard to have unless you have a whole garden that clones itself, it's hard to have three different images like that that actually occur on three different dates. So obviously, two of the, two of the three are false. Maybe all three are false. We have no idea. So that is the reason why we found those, that the registrant had submitted false information. And it was, it was considered misleading in the fact that it depicted activities, cultivation activities that were required to occur prior to May tenth. And it would lead us to believe that that had actually happened prior to May tenth, two thousand and sixteen. For that reason, they were denied. In the appeal letter, the appellant responded by saying locks were not on the gates during the January inspection because cultivation was not occurring. The small cultivation area near the trailer will be abandoned. Regarding the postings, he said existing postings were damaged in the rain. New posting will be installed. And regarding the false and misleading information, that was actually added after the original appeal level, letter, and there was no response from the appellant. With regards to the locks on the gates during the January inspection and the cultivation and so on and so forth, let's just put it this way, there's never been locks on those gates. We haven't read, there were no locks on the January, excuse me, the July twentieth inspection with January seventeenth inspection. And the appellant's opportunity to follow up with proof that they actually provided locks on those gates was not executed. So there, there's no history at all of there ever having been a lock. And also no proof that they abandoned the cultivation of the trailer area. No proof was provided that after they were informed and given the thing they noticed to provide proof. As far as the postings being damaged in the rain, I guess that may very well have been true, but again, we saw no proof that they were actually posted again and the corrections were made. And that completes my presentation. Do you guys have any questions?
Just, this is almost ridiculous to say, but in, in your staff report, when you're under, under number three and your discussion, there, there's a word not that I think you left out. Reported dates of the photographs lead staff to believe cultivation required to occur prior to May tenth, two thousand and sixteen had not occurred. I don't think anybody's going to be confused by that, but.
It's observation taken, too. Thank you.
Has there been any response by the applicant to the situation with the three photos being identical?
I have not heard a response from the other officer.
Thank you. Sharnelle James appearing for the property owner. As for, as far as the photos, my clients did their own submission. Those were photos from the dates that they took off their computer. He, he was not sure where the dates, other than what they were specifically on their computer, so these, they're, they can address their, their techno, technology ability, but they just took what the dates were off the photos on there. So I'm not sure other than that, other than that. Again, this is another code violation issue. And if you'll look at the exhibits in there, you can see a detailed list of what some of the issues were for this property and a majority of them were the, the trash and the garbage. The locks as far as, let me address the trailer first. As of July twentieth, once they received notification, no marijuana was harvested at that location. The plants were immediately removed. They were never, it was never used for cultivation and even, can you guys go back to your overhead shot? You guys probably can't zoom it in more, huh? And when I looked at their overhead shot from the, when I zoomed in, it didn't, it appeared to me that there wasn't, and I looked on Google Earth and I couldn't find either. That, that was abandoned as of the twentieth, so of, or the week after, the twentieth of, when they did the first inspection back in two thousand and sixteen. So it never, the fences were never fixed because they abandoned that location. So that should not be considered part of their denial. The rest of the issues, the tent that was removed, the, the, the trash was all removed, the locks were put on the property later, although there was no photos presented, but the photos that we showed you last time show that they're, they put it on the other property. It does not make logical sense that they wouldn't have put them on all of them, they just didn't take photos of them. And then as far as for the signs, I think I gave you three pictures of signs. There were two, the two gardens before and then, then another, the third garden, which would have been this one. I have another copy of that, but I think I already gave it to you previously. May I approach? Madam Chair, may I approach?
Sorry, yes.
Thanks. Again, the issue is the striping on that, the reflective striping, which again is a minor code enforcement issue that can be corrected with instruction by the board to, to fix that issue. All the other code of, code enforcement issues have been addressed on this property and so there should not be an issue for denial based on code, code enforcement violation. should not be an issue for denial based on code enforcement violations. We thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is Mr. Gunsal going to speak as well?
Unless you have specific questions for him on this one, then.
Okay, thank you. We need to go to public comment if nobody has any questions for Mr. Gunsal. Okay. Is there any public comment on this one? No? Okay. Then I will bring it back. And since there's no public comment, do you have anything to rebut about what she said? Are you good?
Just need to take a quick look at this, the trailer side. She just stated that it had been abandoned and was not harvested. I don't know in that January seventeenth what we're looking at there, but there's some big tall stalks there. And something grew there, and I don't know what that is. It could have been cannabis, who knows? They might have planted fruit trees by it. But I'm not so sure that the plants were removed and not harvested. That would be merely observation.
I have a question for the planning department. Why was there no finding under the requirement of showing proof of cultivation or grading, et cetera? I mean, we have the false and misleading, but not the reverse side?
Proof of cultivation, like demonstrable evidence, is that what you're asking about?
Yeah.
There's plenty of photographs in this, there were nine photographs altogether. And the other ones showed plenty of proof as far as we were concerned.
I see. Okay. The ones we haven't seen?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, they were contained in the staff report. They just weren't part of this presentation because we were focused on that.
Yeah. I believe they were in the staff.
Yeah, there, yeah.
In this report, Thomas Watts has an email dated January nineteenth, and subject is six five three, six five four, six five five, and six five six.
Right.
Which should have been attached to each and every appeal because it would have brought a lot of clarity to things. On that January nineteenth date, it says, "I spoke to the planning director, and he confirmed that there must be a seventy-five foot setback from each property line." So this documentation provided by Mr. Watts had all four parcels in it, just for clarity purposes.
Right.
So I just want to make sure that we noted that in.
I think it was in the last.
Yeah. Well, it specifically says he was told when, I don't want to go back there because it's the wrong appeal. But I don't have any questions for them, if any other commissioners do.
The photograph that's up on the screen, the code inspection of January seventeenth, the area next to the trailer, doesn't look like there's anything growing there at that point. Would you agree with that?
I would agree with that.
You would?
Yes, I would.
Yeah, okay. To have a cultivation area that requires fencing, something has to be growing there, right?
But something that's clearly grown there before. We have some dead plant material standing up, you know, the plants that were grown previously. This is, you know, the off-season, and it would appear that there are, you know, the stalks or some other plant there. I think that was the concern that we had, was that it was shown as being the cultivation area. We had not been informed that it had been abandoned, there had been no change of the application. And so according to that, we felt that it had to meet the same standards as the other cultivation areas unless we were notified otherwise.
And when cannabis is cultivated, everything is gone. There's no dry stalks left. So if there's dry stalks in there, that's something else other than cannabis is growing.
That was going to be my question. What is a dry stalk of cannabis? I thought they locked it off.
They don't. Yeah, they take it off. There is no stalks left when you harvest cannabis.
But clearly cannabis is growing as of July twentieth.
On July twentieth it was, and they were removed from that location.
It looks like tree stalks to me.
I watch.
This was a banana long before, but by the time I.
Mr. Gunsal, can you please come up to the mic?
I'm sorry.
If I'm looking at the picture on the left, are those cannabis plants?
On the left, yes.
So on July?
On January, it says January seventeenth?
On the left, she's asking.
Okay, on the right, where it says January seventeenth, what are those stalks? What are those dry branches?
It could be weeds, it could be the remains of the plants that grew prior. We abandoned this site, and it was abandoned on January seventeenth. They could plainly see that.
Not cannabis plants, whatever plant they put in there, that's what he means. You have to be very clear with them. So you have to explain to them about movement of the other plants. So explain to them where you moved those plants.
We didn't, we abandoned that site.
So you left the stalks? Are those stalks of cannabis on the right, the January seventeenth?
On the right, they could be, but there's just like skeletons, it's like remains.
It was, they weren't harvested. There was no cannabis.
So abandoned doesn't necessarily mean you moved.
No, we didn't move them, no.
They were, yeah.
Okay.
So that was my misunderstanding. When they told me they had abandoned the site, I thought they were.
Yeah, it's very.
Yeah, it was a bad site, that's why we didn't fix the fence. We abandoned the site, and by January seventeenth, it was plain that it was all abandoned.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, just an observation here, the urgency ordinance does define cultivation area. So shall mean that portion of the cultivation site containing live medical cannabis plants. Dead stalks don't count, in my judgment.
Right.
And therefore, while it seems to me there's a clear violation as of July twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, I can't say the same thing about January twenty-seventeen.
Well, let's see if Mr. Watts can give us some clarity.
Yeah, going back to those pictures of the stalks on the right, in my opinion, those are cannabis stalks. Having been to hundreds of other sites, I've seen this elsewhere where they just either trim the leaves off or whatever, but sometimes the stalks are left behind in the ground.
Okay.
It seems to me that if code compliance has continued to enforce the law during the non-growing season, why, certainly I don't think having no cannabis plants active is going to change our results. And I think we've been requiring locks on established cannabis grows even now.
No, I think, I think in those cases, we also had no locks during the actual growing season when there were live medical cannabis plants. And we have a situation where even after the grow season, there are still no locks. That is some evidence that there were never any locks. And so it's relevant to the determination. But if all you had was an inspection after the grow season, nothing during the grow season, if all you had was a situation where there were no live medical cannabis plants, period, you don't have a cultivation area. And therefore, in my judgment, the posting requirement and the fencing requirement do not apply. This rarely comes up because you always have a grow and an inspection during that period.
So earlier you asked if anybody's seen any code violation issues, have they changed So the complaint was that they could access the grow from on the deck, from code compliance?
The complaint is that it is unfenced. There is not continuous fencing. It is an unsecured cultivation area. And it was unsecured with cannabis growing on it on July twentieth. Again, the cannabis was not growing on January seventeenth, but I think the situation's comparable to the approach that the commission is taking with the locks. We did see the cannabis growing, you know, on July twentieth with the cultivation unsecured by a lack of fencing.
Is it possible that this follow-up is really a proof that previously it was not fenced or locked properly?
Yeah, I agree with Kelly that it's got to have live plants on that for the date of the violation, but we're really saying they didn't have the site locked at any time.
That's pretty much it, yeah.
When the plants were growing. So we're kind of getting our timeframe mixed up a little bit.
And what is the intent as far as the cultivator goes? When are they actually going to comply? I mean, at what point?
Did you have anything further to add?
No, just that I never received any muck, any proof on this site either. If indeed the plants were removed prior to my inspection and those are cannabis stalks, it was never pointed out.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. If there's nothing further, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I think that the appeal should be denied for all the reasons stated in the draft resolution.
I agree with Kelly.
I agree.
I do too, and I have, but I have some suggestions, that's still language. I don't know if you want those now.
Please.
Now would be good.
Yes.
Okay. Under number three, under the evidence, I think we modify that first sentence, three evidence photographs submitted by the registrants have the same, and then replace the word "image" with the phrase "subject plants at identical stages of growth," but have three different dates, et cetera. And then the next sentence, therefore the dates are false, I'd say therefore at least two of the three dates are false.
Well, we don't really know that.
We don't, I mean, we know that at least two of the three are false. They might have been all taken on the same day.
Right, but they could have all been false. They could have all been changed.
They, it could have all been taken on a different parcel at a different time, but that's what we actually know. And I guess, I mean, it should be a period after fault. I really like my first suggestion, the second one about therefore at least two of the three. I don't mind that much about.
Well, the application is false.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying there wasn't false or misleading information. There was. Clearly it was false and misleading. When you have three dates, three pictures supposedly taken in three different years, all showing identical plants at the same time, there's false and misleading information.
Maybe I'm wrong, but I didn't hear any attempt by the applicant to deny that. Is it?
Right.
So could we mention that as well?
Oh, I, Ken?
Mr. Lawyer, what's the word I'm trying to think of? Unco-averberate, no, wrong word. Well, un-denied.
I'm sorry, today you're a commissioner. We have to make sure we keep our hats straight. Oh, look at him, he's throwing fire at us. Okay. So you guys would like to add that two of the three photos are false, and the appellant did not deny that fact?
Yes.
Everybody okay with that?
I agree with Commissioner Latish's suggestions. I don't think we need the last suggestion. I think what they said was a ditch came off a computer.
Yeah. Okay.
So I would be more comfortable just with Mr. Latish's amendments.
Commissioner Sisk? We're polling here.
I'm fine with that.
I'm sorry?
I'm fine with Tim's. Mr. Latish is, sorry.
Okay. One, two, three. So there we go. On that note, I think we will go to Paul and have him read the recommendation.
Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution two zero one seven dash zero three one, denying appeal two zero one six dash six five six, thereby upholding the planning director's determination to deny application two zero one six dash six five six, as amended.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Motion carries five oh.
I'd like to request that the photographs that were submitted as evidence, do you have any? Yes.
Okay.
We need to read into the record, right?
Yes, we need to read into the record that you have the right to appeal within fifteen days to the planning department.
Which she just did.
And the photos that we submitted are going to be part of the record.
Yes, as part of the record.
Okay. So we have one appeal left for today, and I would like to recommend that we just go through it and not take a lunch today and go home afterwards. Do you need a break before we go into this one, or are you good to go?
I'm good to go.
All right. So we will go to item number four. Appeal by Thomas Ross, item numbers eight six four, two zero one six eight six four. And it looks like we're switching presenters and going to Miguel. Miguel, we gave a long lecture at the beginning of today's hearing about speaking loud and clearly into the mic.
All right.
Is the appellant here?
I haven't seen the appellant. I don't believe he's here.
Mr. Ross? There's nobody here representing this appeal? Okay.
All right, so I'm here to present appeal two thousand and sixteen dash eight sixty four for Thomas Ross. It's a appeal of the planning director's denial of the commercial cannabis registration. The subject parcel is located at fifty-eight thirty-nine Old Immigrant Trail. So essentially what happened is that on March twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen, code compliance conducted an inspection. Several code violations were noticed, one of which was an unsecured grow site, which is a violation of seventeen point nine five point one six five point N point ten. Here's a few pictures as reference to what we're talking about by an unsecured grow site. As you can see, the fence is almost on the ground. It is not quite six feet, and the top portion of the fence is, looks to be made out of a, some sort of burdening or plastic. You see on the right part of, on the right side of this picture, the fence is also not standing erect at six feet. Another violation that was found on this cultivation site was a lack of a posting for the application pending certificate, which is required by seventeen point nine five point one six five point I. And obviously, there's no picture of it because it wasn't posted. Then there were also other violations of county code or local law and state law that were found on this parcel, one of which was hazardous electrical. As you can see, there's extension cords running through that puddle right there. Over here, we have a, some sort of lighting system hanging by ropes to some other fluorescent overhead lights. It's pretty hazardous, I would say. Some more extension cords and a muck. So another violation of county code was an unpermitted hoop house. There's the picture of the hoop house. It exists. This picture was taken on March twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen. There was also junk and debris, which is also a violation of county code. And the appellant was living in a portable office, which is also a violation of county code. So all these violations of county code, the denial is based on seventeen point nine five point one seven zero point eight point four, which allows the planning director to deny a registration for violations of county or state or federal laws. And that's the justification for that. Code compliance gave the appellant ten days to come to compliance and provide evidence of compliance. The appellant did submit evidence. The appellant did submit evidence, but he submitted it nine and thirteen days past the established deadline. Therefore, Code Compliance recommended this cultivation site for denial to the Planning Department. Upon review of this application after Code's recommendation, Planning Department noticed that this registration was in violation of 17.95.165.1.4.8/B, which is, they did not submit an NOI, a completed NOI to the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board. So the applicant did submit an NOI on September 7th to the Water Board. However, it was, the Water Board found it to be incomplete. On November 4th, 2017, 2016 actually, the Water Board mailed the appellant a letter stating, hey, your application's incomplete, correct this, send us a new one. And the appellant never did, he took no action on this. And as far as I'm aware, the appellant took no action on this Water Board issue, even after he was denied by us and Planning on May 22nd. On June 12th, the Water Board sent a second notice of incomplete, just saying, if you do not come into compliance with us within thirty days, we're gonna void your application, you'll forfeit your monies. On June 27th, planning staff, myself, actually contacted the Water Board just to figure out exactly what is going on with this application. The Water Board let me know that the cultivation site, while it is small, it's only 5,000 square feet, it is located on a significant slope, which requires a tier three application. The tier three application costs $10,000, not to mention the other costs that are associated with it, with the studies and whatnot. So that's what it will take for Mr. Ross to come into compliance, at least with the Water Board, at least $10,000. And his thirty day deadline was actually yesterday, so I haven't really contacted the Water Board since then. And if he didn't contact them, if he didn't work it out with them, then as of today, he's probably kicked out. And that's it for my presentation. I do have photos of the corrections that Mr. Ross submitted. Like I said, they're late, so in my opinion, they're irrelevant, but if you'd like to see them, I could show them to you.
Miguel, I have a deep concern that we're kind of falling into a pattern that, gosh, he hasn't cured his Water Quality Control Board requirements under the urgency ordinance. And there are some requirements under this ordinance that are very, have a very set date, and we don't have anything from Code Compliance saying unless you do this with a Water Quality Control Board, you're going to, you're not, you won't be brought into compliance. I'm really concerned that we need to make it very clear here that since he was not in compliance as of September 7th...
Yes.
...2016, he cannot be in compliance with the, with the, with the ordinance...
Yes.
Even if he later becomes compliant with Water Quality Control Board.
There are a few caveats, I don't know the correct term for it, but you know, sometimes registrants do, you know, they do submit an NOI before September 7th. However, they forgot to check something, or they forgot to, you know, the antenna was there, they paid their monies. It's a simple mistake, and all they had to do was submit a new one. And, you know, they'd still be in compliance. However, like I say, with Mr. Ross right here, he never took any actions to correct any of this.
Well, it sounds like a, kind of a slippery slope. I'd be interested in what the other commissioners think about on this, on this particular requirement with the Water Quality Control Board. You know, I can understand being confronted with a hard, a hard case, so we might not want to make a very absolutely clear line that if you don't have everything done by September 7th, it's done, but I don't like the idea that, gee, as of yesterday, maybe he could have cured his problems with the urgency ordinance. That seems to me not to be consistent with what we're, what the urgency ordinance intended. But I'm interested in other people's thoughts.
Well, in this particular case, according to the staff report, he did submit his NOI on September 7th.
It was not complete, though. And that's, I mean, the Water Quality Control Board specifically wrote him a letter saying that was not complete, so at least that it's clear that he did not submit a complete application by September 7th. I'm concerned if we go ahead and say, well, that may be true, but gee, by January, did you, no, not by January, well, how about by May? Well, no, but maybe June 27th, you know, it...
Yeah, definitely.
I'm, I don't know where, where we end up with the, with the urgency ordinance's requirements. If, they can all be cured at some point, even though the urgency ordinance says, you shall do this by this date.
Mr. Ladish, Mr. Ross, part of the challenge that we faced with this issue, and what the Water Board staff faced, was the same thing we faced, inundation of applications at a certain deadline. They're probably even in worse shape than we were, they had a handful of staff, and their range covers, I think, everything from Fresno to the Oregon County line, and east of the Cascade, or east of the coast, or, yeah, east of the coast range. So they had a huge area with multiple counties and jurisdictions, you know, with different rules. They were also inundated with applications. In many cases, there were, they submitted application, they felt it was complete, and then at some point in time later, it could have been a few weeks, could have been a couple months, the Water Board say, well, no, you're missing this, or you applied for the wrong tier type. And if the applicant made a concerted effort at that point in time to correct that deficiency, we would consider that a timely filing.
So that in, in effect, it was, under your interpretation of the urgency ordinance, it was a complete application, it just technically needed some...
Yes, yes. And it could be, in this instance, because of the size, the applicant felt that it fell into one tier, but then based on the criteria of the Water Board, they determined, no, no, you're a tier three rather than a tier two. Or as Miguel pointed out, there might have been, you know, a technical error of some sort, they easily corrected. So we have used our judgment to say, you know, they, they applied, they, you know, had some minor fixes they needed to do, they did those in a timely manner, and they can continue on. In this case, there was no attempt to, to fix it, and there still isn't. So we have been receiving sort of regular reports from the Water Board, we just recently got another one saying, here, here are the ones that are outstanding, that we have contacted them, they've not contacted back, those will be denied. Just flat out denied, they are not in compliance, and they have not made an attempt to comply.
So perhaps in this case, we ought to make clear that, that no matter what the requirement is under the urgency ordinance of a completed application, this application was not complete as of September 7th, for all the reasons stated.
Yeah, I don't know that we want to go into that because of the backlog, I mean, technically, with the overload that our Planning Department and every other department in this county had, we couldn't meet a lot of our deadlines in responses because of the overwhelming amount, and I think the state is under the same issues.
I understand.
And for us, what they, we had to do was make adjustments and say, as long as they applied and made the attempt. But until the state gets back to them, there's no way, I mean, if the state had gotten back to them before September 7th, these people would be able to do that. The state isn't getting back to them because they're overwhelmed too. So I'm not sure I want to cross over on that and start interpreting the state and what their responsibilities is.
I'm not, I'm not trying to interpret, I'm just trying to interpret our, interpret our ordinance.
Well, what we have...
If we're saying, go ahead.
What we have done is pulled their state filings, contacted the state, and made sure that they applied before, on or before that September 7th date, and that's what's been the accepted procedure. And he did do that.
Yeah, even if, okay.
But as far as the corrective work that the state was requiring, he didn't have that opportunity because they never got back to him in a timely manner because they're overwhelmed.
Well, actually, I think the evidence in number two, on page two of the resolution, actually outlines very clearly what happened. He was notified on November 4th, he did not respond, and there's been no response since then. So I think it, it outlines the steps we took to ensure that they were in compliance with the Water Board requirements, and I don't think we need to add anything additional.
I'd like to give a slightly different angle on this very thing. On the Water Quality Board letter, it's denied, they claim it's incomplete. They may be using that specific word because of our using that word in the urgency ordinance, that's my guess. Anyway, I don't think it's a matter of being incomplete. Maybe tentatively denied might be more accurate. But the problem is, this slope business on this particular parcel apparently led to runoff of toxic chemicals. Now, it's not in, not before us today, but that's the sort of thing you need to watch. I think planning should be looking out for as well.
That's not the state water quality.
Well, I don't know where it should be, then somebody, apparently he was, perhaps the neighbors would have told us about that.
Okay.
The neighbors that are out in the audience.
So, he's not here today, and there's no representative. He did write a letter of appeal, and we're gonna go to public comment in a second. My concerns would be that in his appeal letter, he thought this commercial grow was a good way to try to bounce back after the fire, but it seems the county itself does not know what it wants, and I have been uncertain of a ban most, if not all, year. That statement concerns me because we have some pretty big issues on this property that aren't cleaned up that any of us know of. And if a denial comes through today and he didn't even take steps to come to this appeal, this is a project that is gonna need some serious follow-up to make sure the cleanup gets done on this one. He's gonna throw his hands up and walk away, we're gonna be left with a pretty big mess on that lot with the statement that he's made. Because if you don't know if the county's gonna ban, this kind of tells me, why should I do anything anymore? I have concerns about his appeal letter, but I'm gonna go to public comment and let If you could sign in so that Annette could get your name properly, that would be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is Peter Baldridge, I'm the president of the El Rancho Loma Serena Homeowners Thank you for the opportunity to address commission today. I'm, I find it curious that Mr. Ross, in his letter, stated that he saw growing as a way to bounce back from the fire, when, from our observation, he was growing for many years before that. This is not a fire recovery issue for Mr. Ross, he's, he's a committed cannabis grower and has been for quite some time. The property on which Mr. Ross has been commercially cultivating cannabis is located within the El Rancho Loma Serena Homeowners Association. The Declaration of Restrictions of the HOA prohibits the use of any lot for purposes other than residential or in violation of law. In defiance of this restriction, Mr. Ross has, as a tenant, commercially grown cannabis within our HOA for several years. It was only in 2016 that the HOA put in place the legal mechanisms to impose fines for violations of its Declaration of Restrictions. The HOA threatened heavy fines on growers like Mr. Ross, but offered a 95% reduction in fines if cannabis-related activities on the property terminated at the end of 2016. In other words, we would have allowed him to have that growing season, but then leave. Mr. Ross and the lot owner presumably ignored our offer. He, Mr. Ross, appears to believe that he's entitled to pursue his commercial operation regardless of the legal restrictions on the use of the property. Substantial fines were imposed on the owner of the parcel, and the HOA is in the process of placing lien on the parcel because of the fines, the fines remain unpaid. At this, at this time, and at no time, as Mr. Ross, as the tenant whose commercial behavior is responsible for the imposition of the fines, offered to pay these fines, or even to negotiate with the HOA in order to avoid this potential encumbrance on the property. In short, Mr. Ross is not the kind of businessman that takes responsibility for the consequences of his actions. He takes little responsibility as a neighbor. His dogs were responsible for severe injury to a neighbor's pet. Although he promised to pay for the veterinary bills, he paid nothing until his failure to pay became a matter of public record. And even then, he paid only a portion of the damages inflicted by his dogs. Mr. Ross is essentially camping on the property, and the HOA has photographic evidence of the waistlines from his trailer running off the edge of the hillside. In short, Mr. Ross is an individual who defies legal requirements, feels entitled to act as he chooses, takes little responsibility for his actions, pays little regard to the quiet enjoyment of his neighbors and their property, and has little apparent concern for the environmental impacts of his commercial operation. He appears to be exactly the kind of person the county's regulatory program should eliminate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Was there any other public comment?
May I approach?
Yes.
There's a copy for planning, and I brought a copy, a handout for each of the commissioners, please. You bet. Good morning, actually it's afternoon now, to the Planning Commission. My name is Sandy Maitrot, and I am a resident of and prior board member of the El Rancho Loma Serena Homeowners Association. Some of you may also know that I was a non-cultivating participant in the crafting of the urgency ordinance, and until just recently, worked in planning on the registration effort. I believe in regulating this industry, and have invested a great deal of myself in Calaveras County's efforts to bring sane regulation to its constituents. However, I also do not believe that every individual that registered to cultivate commercially is entitled to do so, and that's for varying reasons. In the case of Mr. Ross, the following reasons are why the privilege, and I'm going to reinforce that, the privilege of cultivating should be denied. You each have a copy of a post Mr. Ross made on Facebook on June 29th of this year. In it, he states he has been growing for patients with cancer and other life-threatening diseases. When called before the Board of Directors for El Rancho Loma Serena in August of 2016, Mr. Ross stated he needed his medicine and the volume of plants for his personal use, when in reality, this is a money-making, commercial business venture. The owner of the property on which Mr. Ross cultivates has been fined by the HOA for allowing commercial cultivation in a residential community. A recent court ruling made by Judge Healy involving another lot in El Rancho Loma Serena confirms commercial cultivation is inappropriate based on our CCNRs. This is further reinforced by a similar ruling made by the same judge within the M24 Ranch HOA. Not only does Mr. Ross's appeal indicates he feels it's his privilege to cultivate commercially in violation of the CCNRs, but neither he nor his landlord rendered payment for fines levied by the association. Mr. Baldridge has addressed that. Every owner in the HOA will ultimately fund attorney's expenses when the board proceeds with either litigation or foreclosure involving this particular lot. But apparently, this means little to Mr. Ross as a tenant. Mr. Ross has shown little regard for his immediate neighbors. As has already been touched upon, he had an issue with one neighbor involving one of his cane corso dogs, and several have contacted animal control over the constant and continual barking. In another instance, Mr. Ross approached a neighbor who lost their home in Butte and chose to rebuild. His issue involved their lighting. The light was for their personal safety, but Mr. Ross was unhappy because it illuminated his grow at night. Apparently, he feels it's his privilege to... Apparently, he feels it's his privilege to disrupt the community in a variety of ways. As the registrant, Mr. Ross should have been in compliance with the urgency ordinance at the time he submitted his registration form. More than a year later, the requirements of the urgency ordinance have not been met, and again, based on Mr. Ross's own words in his Facebook posting. This is not his fault, but rather, the county's, because they won't let him move his cultivation site to a different location on the property he does not own, yet it would be more accommodating to him financially. I'd like to address too, that piece part, when it comes to paying the Water Board fines. Yes, he was burnt out in the fire. Yes, he may be tight on funds financially, but he is the tenant, number one, and number two, he's a tenant that rides around in a Mercedes. Mr. Ross's social media comments and appeal letter are in conflict. In his appeal letter to the county, he alludes to having cultivated only as a means of bouncing back from the Butte fire. In Facebook, he admits to cultivating as early as 2013. Not only does this have to, not only does one have to question this conflicting information, but having grown all that time on a tier-three slope that is of concern to the Water Board, begs one to ask, what damage has been done to the aquifers that exist in our community and to Jesus Maria Creek? In addition, if somebody takes the time to look, Jesus Maria Creek ultimately flows into the north fork of the Calaveras River, which affects hundreds of Calaveras County residents. Mr. Ross has led people to believe, per his Facebook posts, that the only reason he was denied his privilege to cultivate was due to the tier designations established by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. As shown today by staff, the reasons are far greater and significant. I stand before you today as a resident of Calaveras County who does continue to support regulated cannabis. It's my hope that the work I was associated with on the urgency ordinance would bring forth an industry of highly professional cultivators who are truly invested in their community and willing to adhere to the standards for the privilege of doing business here. I would also hope that the data that was gathered would have been used to establish best practices for a permanent ordinance. However, Mr. Ross has shown himself to be reckless in his business practices and less than a good neighbor. I ask that you uphold the planning director's denial of Mr. Ross's, again, I will reinforce the word "privilege," to cultivate commercially in Calaveras County, which also aligns with the CCNRs of El Rancho Loma Serena. Any questions? Thank you for your time.
Miss Maitrot.
Yes.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Sandy Price, and I am also a resident of El Rancho Loma Serena Homeowners Association. I am also the accountant for the HOA. As Sandy stated, Mr. Ross is cultivating on, has been fined, do, excuse me. Mr. Ross is cultivating on and has been fined for those cultivations of the cannabis. And to date, neither Mr. Ross nor the owner of the property have made any attempt to pay these fines. As stated, our CCNRs prevent the commercial use of property, which includes the commercial growing of any crop and includes cannabis. I agree with Sandy. However, I would like to elaborate on the effects the activities of this lot has made on the rest of this peaceful neighborhood. I have submitted pictures to the committee of the view from the road of the property. I have, want to see, apparently have been done, and these, this activity has apparently been done in an attempt to comply with the county's urgency ordinance involving cultivation. As you can see, this is an eyesore to our neighborhood. Mr. Ross also has dogs, and has been, and have several issues in regard to these dogs leaving their property. One instance involved the injury of the neighbor's dog that, Inc., required the dog to go to the vet for emergency and costly treatment. I cared for the neighbor's dog a week after this occurrence, and we needed to care for the injury of the foot. Mr. Ross indicated that he would cover the vet expense, but to date, has not, this has not occurred. About a year ago, I was returning home, and as I was driving by Mr. Ross's rented property, I noticed he was discharging wastewater into the ditch alongside the road, which ultimately goes into Jesus Maria Creek. I could not tell if this was gray or black water, but the violation to dispel wastewater into a waterway is illegal. I bring these items to your attention in the attempt to indicate that, I believe, Mr. Ross does not intend to be a good neighbor. He has no respect for the environment, his neighbors, or the laws of the Calaveras County. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Doug Beard. May I approach? If you don't mind, I'll show you the items so you can look at them.
If you could hand them to Annette to pass down, because we have cords, we don't want people to trip over. Thank you so much.
I'll give you a moment to look those over while I sign in. In my opinion, Mr. Ross has shown that he doesn't care much about anything except his crop and his profits. As early as April of 2016, neighbors complained about generator noise and what looked like affluent drainage coming from his motorhome. Picture two on page one, pardon me, on page two, tends to support this conclusion. Picture one just shows what the neighbors had to put up with in the way of a mess, and it was within 30 feet of the road. Nobody could miss it driving up and down. Early in June, there were more complaints about the noise and the similar, and sanitary conditions. Pictures five and six verify he still didn't have power to the property. Note, there's no meter in the, in the distribution panel in that upper-left-hand corner of page six, picture six. It wasn't until the 25th of June that he left his blackwater dump tube out for photo memorization, and, which is clearly depicted in pictures three and four. I have another picture, a close-up of where it's coming out of the, of the vehicle, if anybody really cares, and it's the rear one, which is the black water. It's obvious to his neighbors, only one thing he cares about is crop. He only conforms to the law or any social norms when he's forced to. When you talk about false, misleading information, it hardly covers, in my opinion, in his registration. He says he's got five cane corso mastiffs for his security. Well, that's a violation of the code. It takes a special license to have four, not five. He didn't. And he just lets them roam freely. He doesn't care. He really made for name for himself in our community when the dogs attacked a neighbor's dog, and it did $731 worth of damage. And after a little encouragement, he said he'd pay for it, and he did, in fact, put up 200 bucks, and that ended it. And, you know, that's not complete reimbursement, but now, the neighbor feels like they have to go on their own property armed, because the dogs came back onto their property and attacked their dog again, and they had to drive the dogs off with gunfire. That's just what we're looking for in our neighborhood. The plot plan he filed is amazing, that anyone who would accept it without laughing. If you look at page five, that's what he submitted. If you look at page six, which is depicted by, we'll keep the same front exposure of 380 feet, which is what the county's plot plan shows it as. The widest part of that property is 415 feet. He's talking about having 800 feet on one side of his grow, 700 feet on the other, and the property, when you, the grow, when you measure it on Google, is 280 feet. Well, 415 minus the 275-foot mains, 265, not 280. So he's growing in at least one of the setbacks, if not both. Anyone that look at that diagram on page five and think that that could fit in five acres is, well, it speaks for itself. It's important to understand that we'd have more people here, but they're afraid to come because they're afraid of retaliation. So, obviously, Mr. Ross is not the kind of neighbor everyone's looking for. He's being fined 1,000 bucks a day. Unfortunately, his landowner is being forced to find that, because that's the law. So he walks away, the landowner's stuck, and what's the landowner do? Based on this, I'm asking you to deny this application. Thank you.
My name is Sam Cook. I've been a resident and a lot owner in El Rancho Loma Serena for 26 years now. And to my displeasure, the last four years, I've had another marijuana grower behind me, but that's not here today. I don't live near Mr. Ross, but I want to speak toward the legalities of CCNRs, which, if you've lived in a homeowners association, you're quite well aware of, and you always have people say, oh gee, I didn't know I could do that, because their realtor in the, in the sales process never presented a copy of the CCNRs to them, to educate them of what the restrictions were for that particular property. In our case, it was very clear from day one, before I even signed the purchase agreement, that it was against the CCNRs, therefore, county code which supports the CCNRs, that you could not do any commercial work or cultivation in a homeowners association. Now, we have a number of marijuana growers for commercial medical marijuana who have violated that, and our current board has taken them to task for that. Now, my experience, I was president of the Board of Directors of El Rancho Loma Serena back in the early 90s for about four years, so I've been involved with that. I've been involved with community projects, Mountain Ranch Community Club. I was on the Board of Directors of Mountain Ranch Fire back in the 90s, and I'm currently back on the Board of Directors of Central Calaveras Fire. So I'm, I'm not a person who doesn't know what's right and what's wrong. I understand that, and I understand being a good neighbor. And I have yet to see and hear of Mr. Ross's cultivation and seeing the pictures as him being a good neighbor, let alone a legal neighbor in any way, shape, or form, and no concern about his neighbors to maintain fencing around his dogs. I remember several years ago, a gentleman was killed by a couple pit bulls in Mountain Ranch because they got out of their fenced-in area, Jerry Yates. Anyway, I have empathy for the people who had the damage to the dogs, and another neighbor's dog killed a goat up there. Anyway, my point is, I think that the evidence presented here today from the Code Compliance Group and from Mr. Maurer's group to this board is quite clear, quite evident, that Mr. Ross has been growing marijuana out of compliance with the emergency ordinance and in no concern whatsoever to his neighbors or his community, and has not participated in a positive way in the area he lives in. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Okay. I don't think we're going to have any lead on that issue, right? So I'm going to close the hearing and bring it back. Well, I'm going to, before I close the hearing, first...
Lisa, turn on your mic.
You want to hear me? Is that better? Okay. Sorry. I'm going to have Julie just explain one thing real quick before we go forward and close.
We've had this issue come up a couple of times in past appeals about whether or not the county enforces private homeowners association CCNRs. It does not, it cannot. That would be a gift to public funds. These are private, or, private agreements that need to be enforced privately by the homeowners association using the money from dues. There is nothing in the urgency ordinance that states that compliance with CCNRs is something that the county is going to be looking at. That is a separate responsibility that anybody with land has to, you know, figure out for themselves whether they might run afoul of the homeowners association that they might be a member of, so.
Thank you.
That said, I'd like to appreciate the fact that everybody came in and sat so long in order to say what you had to say.
Okay. So now I will close the hearing and bring it back to the commissioners.
I have one question. On the inspection on March 21 of this year, the question is, were there any live medical cannabis plants at this site? It appears to me there were, from one of the photographs, showing plants appear to be indoors. Is that your interpretation?
Yes, there were live cannabis plants on the site.
And this site was not posted as required? That's correct?
That's correct. It was not posted.
Or fenced?
Or fenced as required.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Can I just ask Lisa?
I'd point out that the copy of the Facebook correspondence we have here, where the last thing on it is a question from somebody. To Thomas William Morris, do you have a hearing date? And his reply, given as of June 29th, was July 13th, so we don't have to have any worries about the fact that he's not here, and did you actually have notice and et cetera?
He actually says it twice in here. He actually states that twice in here.
That should probably be part of the record, then.
Do you have a copy of that?
Yes, we are saving this part of the record.
Are you guys ready for the recommendation?
Steph recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2017-057, thus denying registration for commercial cannabis cultivation application 2016-864.
So moved.
Second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 15 days.
For anyone listening, this action is final unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors in 15 calendar days from today's date.
Okay. So, there's no study session today, correct?
Nope.
Do any of the commissioners have anything they'd like to report out on?
I'm just curious, this is more a question than a report. We take this action, what does, what can code compliance do now as to this... What does what can code compliance do now as to this particular parcel or any other parcel who deny the appeal? Is there, I know the county is highly has a lot of pressure to do enforcement actions, but before somebody like this leaves the area and leaves all the mess there, is there a procedure where code compliance is going to be actually enforcing the its findings or making another inspection or? I guess the question is, what now?
Well, we will follow up on any applications that are denied and any appeals that were not, you know, that were also denied to ensure that they're not cultivating. If they are cultivating, they will be cited. They have 10 days to comply, and then if they don't, then the fines will start accruing, and if need be, we will eradicate. The corollary, the, let's see what I'm looking for, the other issues, concerns that we have about a cannabis site other than the plants, that is something we're going to have to look at and see how we can address that in the future, because we do not have the staffing at this point in time to really handle all that kind of stuff. So right now, the focus is on ensuring that the the financial gain made from illegal cultivation, noncompliant cultivation, that the plants are removed so that they don't benefit from that activity. And that's the focus of code compliance in the sheriff's office right now, is trying to eradicate the plants. But we recognize that there will be a residual problem with, you know, all kinds of associated activities with those grows, from debris left over, from grading, and that's going to be something we'll have to address in the future. But we do not have any program in place right now that.
No check list and deadlines that there.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, it is the landowner's responsibility, and assuming the landowner was benefiting by leasing the property to these cultivators, they have a responsibility to clean up the mess that was left behind, and we'll be looking at that in the future of how we can ensure that that does occur. Thank you.
Then we can go to the planning director for his reports.
I just wanted to just a little update as to what we might be expecting in the next few meetings. We're still working through the response to comments on the EIR for the cannabis ordinance. That should be done towards the end of the month. We'll be reviewing those internally as well as with council to ensure that we've got a legally defensible document that addresses all the arise issues that were brought up earlier today, as as we intended to do anyway. We will then be setting a hearing. I am looking at hopefully the August 27th, 24th hearing for Planning Commission consideration of the zoning ordinance to adopt, to recommend to the board to adopt an ordinance for, currently it's a ban ordinance is what the direction is from the board. So that would be coming up. We may look at setting a special hearing, and I'll sort of look at the calendar as we get closer to, you know, getting that process completed. So I'll be talking to you in the future about possibly setting a special hearing if we need to. I suspect that will be more or less an all-day hearing on one topic. So I don't want to get the that, you know, backed up against a whole bunch of other appeals or other development applications that might cause us to have to go until the wee hours. The other thing that's been coming up, we've been working on a study in San Andreas unrelated to cannabis, which is pretty exciting, about transportation circulation through San Andreas, looking at what we call a southern gateway area out by the airport, as well as how we can make improvements through town to enhance circulation and multimodal movement of people and goods. We will be making a presentation to you on the 10th, and then that will be during a comment period for the negative declaration that we're preparing, and then we'll be coming back later with a recommendation to the board to adopt that plan. It's a circulation plan that would be jointly adopted by the county and COG that we would then use for future funding for improvements along the 49 corridor through town. So that's going to be coming up. I know Commissioner Ladish, I think you said you'd be gone that one day, but that's more of just an informational meeting. We want to do that first, and we want to get the word out to the community that that we've had a number of community meetings and community groups working with us on that, so I think it should be a pretty successful successful program. That's really all that I have right now coming up. We're still working on the general plan EIR. I hope to have an admin draft by the end of the month.
I know you have nothing better to do, but we had a prioritization list that we went over with a couple months ago. Are any of those items going to work their way back soon? Or you think we're going to be buried in EIRs for a while?
I think we're going to be buried in EIRs and cannabis appeals for a while, but I do intend to take that prioritization list along with some other items that have come up to the board, probably in early August, working with the CAO on sort of looking at prioritization for the department. There have been a number of requests by individual board members for different things, and I want to make sure that the full board has the ability to weigh in on, you know, where we direct our resources, rather than, you know, individual board member by board member case. Because there's a lot of things that I would like to get done, that you would like to get done, and I'm sure the board would like to get done, but we only have so much so much oil on the ground.
And I know this is going to be a super rude question, but you're going to put your planning commission through working on a EIR and a ban ordinance? And do we have clear direction from the Board of Supervisors that they're going with a ban so that we don't spend 27 hours working on this? I mean, I guess I'm out, not, I want to make sure we are not going to waste our time, and we've got clear direction at this point. Does anybody know?
The direction that we have from the board is they want to go forward with a ban.
Okay, thank you.
And the terms of that ban are clear at this point?
There is a draft ban ordinance that was prepared by County Council's office. It has been posted on our website. It's available for public review. It's been out there since, what, April, May?
Yeah, it's been out there.
It seems like it's been a while.
Yeah, I think it was the end of April when that was drafted. It was just before the EIR was released, which I think was the first of May. So that's been out there. There's, you know, clear language. Part of what your recommendation the board may be will be to, you know, adopt that ordinance or make suggested changes. That's part of our review process would be, because it's part of the zoning ordinance, you guys are required to weigh in and make a recommendation of the board, and part of that recommendation could be to make changes to that ordinance.
And the public comments that have come in, those are posted on the county? We don't have those posted there anymore.
Well, they were posted. They, I'm sure you all heard about the attack on our website. Currently, it's down. We are working on putting all that information back up in a new format. The IT division has developed a better, more secure format, and that we're transitioning over to that right now.
Okay, we're getting close to that. Is there a chance, because who knows when the website will be completely overhauled and backed up? Is there a chance that the commissioners can get a CD of the public comments like we did with the general plan? There was a lot of comments on there. I was trying to read them online. I know you're going through them, and staff is going through them, and you're going to kind of bring it back, but for my own personal reasons, I would like to read all the public comments.
I can certainly provide that for you if you'd like, and if you want a CD, let me know. I'll burn one for you. Actually, two, three, four.
Do you also do hard copies?
I can run a hard copy for you.
That would be good.
Then you don't need to do my CD if I can get a hard copy.
I prefer to do a CD. It's about.
We're getting antiquated here, gentlemen. We're talking hundreds and hundreds of pages.
Well, that's what I was about to ask. What are we talking? Are we talking a stack of papers?
Oh, it's about that thick.
It doesn't have to be this high-quality paper.
Well, it's a paper that we have.
Well, you know what?
So part of the final EIR will be all of those comment letters. They are bracketed by comment, numbered, and then the response to those comments. So you will be getting that document, which includes all the comment letters, as well as a reference back to each individual comment and our response to that.
But how far in advance are considering it, we'll be getting that?
Enough time to read it, to review it, to contemplate. It will be more than a week. It'll have to be more than a week, because there's no way you guys can get through all that in a.
So you're going to.
Happy to have a CD at this point.
Okay, but if you want to start reading that information in advance, I can certainly provide that for you.
Are you, those comments will be combined that are similar to reference certain pages, so we wouldn't see if there were 10 people commenting on the same issue and see numbers and importance to the communities.
What we will do is, there's probably about a half a dozen to maybe eight or 10, what we call master responses, where we have multiple commenters with the same comment.
Right.
So rather than repeat that, we'll say, okay, you know, see master response number one, and then we'll have a longer, more lengthy discussion of that issue in response to it.
Okay. Is everybody good?
I think that will suffice for me. I don't think I need a copy of all the comments.
Okay.
I'll be good with that, too, if we're going to get it in the format that.
Yeah.
And if they bring the website back up and you have them put the link back on, I think it's important that that be a priority.
Oh, definitely, that's part of it, and we're working with IT right now. Annette and I met with them yesterday to see, you know, how to get that back up. I'm not sure what the timeframe, Annette, did you get an indication of how long?
She's just working on the main page right now, and the additional pages will follow.
I'll have to work with the IT director to make sure that there are certain things that are critical, such as the planning commission minutes. I mean, that's already back up, because we've moved that over into the meeting section of the main county website. But something like, you know, an EIR where there's timeframes or comment, and that's the most efficient way for the public to be able to see those documents, those will have to be up right away. So I'll be working with the IT director and his staff to ensure that that's up and available for the public as soon as possible.
Okay, and then typically, the only other thing I would want to say is that typically we have a five-minute public comment period in this room with the planning commissioners. And I think since it's going to be such a huge meeting and a long day, I would like to reduce the public comment to three minutes, because everybody needs to have a voice.
I think under your.
It's always said five minutes, and now watch, you will have changed it.
I thought I had it with me, but I believe that the procedures that were adopted by the commission in the past allow for the chair to modify those due to the circumstances of the hearing.
Well, I would like to modify to three minutes to give more people a chance to speak and have them, uh-oh, look, I'm getting in trouble. Here we go.
Even even if it doesn't, we have some direction from the board to try to bring forward some revisions to the procedures for the planning commission. There are some other things, such as briefing schedules for appeals, et cetera, that have been asked. So to the extent time, place, manner, restrictions are not already incorporated in your rules, we can add that in a draft revise.
Okay, I'm just saying, if we make sure it's advertised that way, it won't cause a problem later. Okay. Okay?
That's all I have.
You make today seem like a busy day.
We have some work cut out for us in the future.
What we got about the EIRs?
All right. Well, thank you all, and the meeting is adjourned.